Well, we can't hear her. Let me know when. Yes, you're live. No, you're not live.
Madam Mayor, it is six oh four and we are live.
Thank you very much. That's much better. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular City Commission Meeting, Revision Number Two of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVeigh.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Segrich.
Present.
The Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence will be led by Commissioner May.
All right, let's take a moment of silence to do with as you wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Segrich will lead us in the.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Wow, that's kind of a forest of mountain. It's interesting. Okay, do we have any additions, deletions, or reordering?
I have one.
Well, why don't we start with our clerk?
Um, yes, so we are going to move Presentation A to Presentation D, so B will be A and so forth, because the person doing the presentation is stuck in traffic.
Oh, okay. All right. Anything else from my colleagues?
I would like to make a motion to move unfinished unfinished Business B to the end of the meeting after new Business H, so we can get through the business of the meeting, thinking that unfinished Business B is going to be a heavy conversation. This way, we can let the staff and the people who are here for other items go home.
That's a motion?
Yes, motion to move unfinished B to the end after new Business H.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you all for.
All right, thank you very much. So unfinished Business will be moved. Anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to move Consent Agenda C, pull that to wherever the appropriate, well, actually, I would put it um either before or after New Business C, because they're
Right.
They're a pair.
Makes sense. Okay.
I can second that.
Okay, so put it on, make consent, add it to New Business C?
I don't know if you can add it onto it, but put it either before or after.
Madam Clerk, do you get that?
Well, she got, we got a vote.
So I'll make it New Business D and everything will move down one.
Okay, do we, Mr. McVeigh, you made a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I had already seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else? Okay, so a motion to
We done, we out.
Done with you people.
We out.
Was that a Freudian slip? I don't know.
Uh, a motion to accept the commission is changed.
Motion.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, we have presentations and we're gonna have.
I'm sorry, was there a second?
Yes, there was, by Commissioner May.
No, just to move that, but to accept the agenda as changed, I can second that motion as well. Thank you.
And then we need a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Recognition of Janique Royal, HR Manager and the City of Lake Worth Beach Wellness Committee for twenty twenty-five Gold Bell Seal for Workplace Mental Health Recipient, and she is here and coming up. Come on up.
Beach, beach.
Turn on your mic. Can you hear me now? I feel like, Melissa, louder. I am Lauren Slayden, the HR Director for the City of Lake Worth Beach, and I'm very, very proud to be here to recognize Janique Royal, my HR Manager and new SHRM CP as of yesterday. Very proud of her, but she is a leader of the Wellness Committee, and she's been leading a team that has helped the committee really make sure that we're aware of mental health awareness. And I think this is very close clause to all of us. We lost an employee a few weeks ago, unfortunately, to suicide. So we want to make sure that we continue the message out to our employees. We did increase our EAP sessions from six to nine. So that's, those are free nine sessions with a mental health professional, fully confidential, and we're trying to encourage people and spread the word. This is also the team that has spread wellness through the committee and kind of help with their coworkers, and we're going to recognize the rest of the Wellness Committee in just one minute. And Joelle is going to explain a little bit more about the, Joelle Cantor is here from the Garing Group. She is going to tell us a little bit more about the award that the city and Unique and the Wellness Team helped us receive this year. But also, I want to make sure you guys realize that this is a team that helps us keep our insurance premiums down. So for the past two years, we've had a zero percent increase, which is unheard of in my career. And this year, we came in at three and a half percent, which is still amazing. So Joelle can tell you, because she works for the Garing Insurance Broker, that's not what other cities are receiving. And it is behalf of Jo- Joelle. Well, Joelle, Joelle, Unique and her team, spreading the word, making sure that we have the Mamovan, the Dermovan, the Wellness Committee, the Wellness Fair, making sure that employees get all these checks ahead of time before they become problems. So I couldn't be prouder, and I'm gonna let Joelle tell more about the Bell Seal.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I just have notes in here, so I don't miss anything. Here we go. All right. So first of all, working with Unique has been an absolute dream. I feel like we're colleagues because of how well we work together. But the Bell Seal for Workplace Mental Health is put on by Mental Health America. It's a national award, and I didn't want to mess up these numbers. So last year alone, Florida was the most successful giving awards to employers that applied for the program. So Florida alone accounted for fourteen percent of the total certifications, which is absolutely amazing. And then, so there's about eleven hundred employers that applied for the award, and only two of five earned an award. And the city actually weren't earned gold, which is absolutely amazing. It's the third highest. It's absolutely amazing that we're able to do this. Every year, we host a mental health first aid course that myself and a colleague teaches to leadership. So we've done, I think, three so far, so managers can attend, and it's really to showcase how important mental health is for them to be on the lookout of their own employees and how to have that conversation, because I think that's the hardest part. So Unique organizes those courses with us. She does an amazing job. She does everything that we need for mental health and really pushing that. We've had conversations as well to offer more supplemental benefits as well, in addition to the increase in the EAP, because it's so important, not just to focus on the EAP when someone needs it, but also the preventive health. So I think that is number one. And outside of mental health, I just wanted to touch on a few other things that Unique has done. So we also launched, as Lauren was talking about, the preventive visits. We have on-spot dermatology here. We have onsite mammograms, all of those to bring to the employees. And we launched the Motivate Me Program in conjunction with Cigna, where employees complete preventive visits, biometrics, health assessment, to earn points, to earn awards, rewards, sorry. So we launched in twenty nineteen, prior to Unique. And at that point, a total of thirty-three employees earned the max one hundred points. And from this past year, as of the last, as of June thirtieth, the closed date of our last report, we'll get one more, with Unique pushing it and encouraging the Wellness Committee too as well. We have over a hundred employees now that have earned the total one hundred points from their preventive visits. So that's all for Unique, because she promotes it, she pushes it, she emails it. And if they, if employees don't respond, she calls them, she gets back to them, "Did you make your appointment?" I mean, Unique is really the behind the scenes for everything wellness-related. She's at every event. She does amazing. So it's absolute kudos to Unique. So congratulations, Unique. You're amazing.
Excuse me, for those of us who don't, what does EAP stand for?
Employee Assistance Program. Absolutely.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
And I am so impressed. We get the emails all the time of things that they do. As a matter of fact, I went to the dermatology truck one day, and I found a little skin cancer in the head, and I went and got a check, so. Save the mail. You save the mail. Someone big for that, but that's.
Okay, okay. I'm a neutral party. Um, I will say a big thanks to my Wellness Committee. You guys make the experience all the more great. Um, can you please stand up so you can be recognized? Everyone stand up and come up. Everyone should know who you are.
This is wonderful.
Around.
And what an increase from thirty-three to a hundred percent.
Yeah. These are just a few of our members, but when it's events or anything that deals with preventative care, um, I have way more coming out. I just want to say thank you to the ones that are always there for me and help the city push this mental health initiative. They're always there with great ideas. They're always attending the meetings that we have monthly. They basically feel the same way that I do when it comes to supporting employees, and hopefully, a support in employees means that we're supported in a community that we're into. So big thank you to Alyssa Cabrera, big thank you to Timothy Ivory, big thank you to Ernestine Siggers, Rolande, Joseph, and Wanda, and all the other members that wouldn't, weren't able to make it today. I really do thank them a lot, because I wouldn't be here without them. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Mr. Brown, wait, 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 wait. We're gonna get a picture, but Mr. Brown has something to say.
I just wanted to thank everyone, and um, I, I think sometimes people don't understand how important this is. And Lauren, I know you said we're at three percent this year, but the last two years are nothing. Do you mind saying what other municipalities were getting as far as increases when it comes to insurance?
Oh.
And with our budget, that is a major impact to our annual budget, if we're looking at a fifteen percent increase. So to have two years with nothing and then only three percent this year, this is huge for the three, three years. Yeah.
We have it all here, the, you know, our onsite, the vaccine clinics, all because of history and making sure that they're Well, thank you to Rebecca.
Jenny, I'm excited. We can move this. I know this has. Okay, next up, do we have our other person here yet? For A, for B? To the end of all of them?
Okay. No, I take it back. He's here.
He's here.
Oh, fantastic.
Do you need a minute to settle in? We could do something else in the meantime.
I'm ready.
He's ready to go.
So this is the HR show tonight. I'm sure you guys saw the agenda and noticed. Apologies in advance, but I am very proud to introduce Chris Kittleson, who is here to award our Risk Professional of the Year Award to Therese Hall Potier, another one of my employees I am here to brag about. I'm so proud of her. Chris will tell you just what that entails.
Thanks, Lauren.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Kenyon, I always have problems with, I'm a little short.
Yep, just hold the whole thing up.
Oh, like this? Oh, good, thanks. I didn't know. Better, very good. As Lauren mentioned, my name's Chris Kittleson. I've worked with the City of Lake Worth Beach for about fifteen years as your safety consultant from Preferred Government Insurance Trust, so thank you for having me this evening. Every year, we select somebody from our region that demonstrates high levels and exemplary examples of risk management. So I would say, what was it, maybe three or four years ago, you introduced me to Therese. So during that time, I went, wow, look at what she can do. So this evening, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that, some of the criteria that allowed me to present to my people in the Home Office on her behalf. And then we're gonna present her. I brought this really nice award along. Bill's got it there. So first of all, it's an honor to present the Preferred Risk Management of the Year Award for twenty twenty-five to an individual who has profoundly impacted the City of Lake Worth Beach's organization and field of risk management. Our recipient's unwavering commitment to safeguarding people and resources is evident in their wide-ranging contributions. They were instrumental in developing and implementing an effective safety committee and championed robust, engaging safety training programs that reduced incidents and empowered the workforce. Therese's meticulous approach to safety inspection protocols has ensured thoroughness and immediate corrective action, fostering a safer environment. When it comes to claims management, her expertise has led to efficient, pathetic, and strategic resolutions, minimizing organizational exposure. Perhaps their most profound contribution has been enhancing the City of Lake Worth Beach's overall culture of safety, which is very important. She's done an extremely good job on that. Finally, this individual has consistently maintained the highest level of professionalism within the field of risk management. Therese is a true ambassador of our profession as safety consultants and risk management people, always seeking to advance knowledge, share best practices, and uphold ethical standards. For Therese's visionary leadership, tireless dedication, and profound impact on the City of Lake Worth Beach's safety culture and risk management practices, I proudly present Preferred Risk Management of the Year Award for twenty twenty-five to Therese Hall Potier. So Therese, come up and accept your award.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for attending. My name is Therese Hall Potier, and I have been doing this role for about four years. I was blindsided to this role. It wasn't what I expected. However, I have grown in this role, and I really appreciate all the support that I have received from Chris Kittleson and also from Bill Wilson. He's our agent. I'm not sure where, oh, there he is. And also my colleagues at the Safety Committee. None of them are here today, unfortunately. But without them, I could not succeed in the role, because I've gotten a lot of, a lot of support. I also want to say thank you to Lauren for believing in me and for always encouraging me, as well as Jenny. She's my backup. And I just appreciate, appreciate the opportunity, and thank you.
I like awards. All right, next up, we have the Quarterly CRA Update by Joan Oliva, our Director of our CRA.
Good evening, Joan Oliva, Executive Director, CRA. Just one second. You could go to the first slide, please. That'd be great. Thank you so much. So this multi-color this multi-color presentation right now has two maps on it, one on the right and one on the far left. These are all of our affordable housing projects, whether they are built already or whether there are a few of them that are land-banked and destined for affordable housing in the future. Since twenty eleven, seven hundred and eighty-eight units have been developed in the district, and four hundred and eighty-three of those are deemed restricted as affordable units, while forty-five are workforce. There are six hundred and seventy-three units pending, just in the district, of which three hundred and thirty-six will be deemed affordable and eighty-six will be workforce units. And in the map, you'll see in the middle there, we have the urban arts lofts, we have village flats, which has just started, I think, maybe like last week. They poured the concrete on the first part of that on thirteen ten. And just on the other side of the map of Sky Garden and Standard, which are private developments, there's a large lot previously owned by Mr. Rice that we have purchased, as well as another, as long, as well as, sorry, as well as a number of other lots around there. So the potential is to do a forty-unit project in that particular area. Thank you so much. These are two of the sites that we recently purchased. One fifteen had to be demoed due to asbestos, lead, mold, termites. One oh five South F, as you can see, is all boarded up. That one is actually gonna be a Habitat House, or trying to see if they can rehab it and reuse it, as opposed to one fifteen, which will actually be two separate Habitat Homes. These are some early designs for the Community Land Trust, which is also one of our really great partners. As you can see, the two-story one, which I really like, those will be two-story duplexes, and those will be going at three oh four and three fourteen South D. The Villas, right now, we have them located at about four different locations. Like I said, these are early designs. They've changed a little bit. One really exciting thing is the Community Land Trust of Palm Beach and Treasure Coast. Our partner just received a two million dollar grant from Robert Wood Foundation. So that, together with our Pro Housing Grant of four point four million dollars, will really go a long way in providing more, not only infrastructure, but affordable homes.
Is it two-story or one family or two-stoop?
One family.
What?
Yeah, and those, those will probably go for around the two hundreds, low two hundreds. Uh, these are some of the Habitat Homes, the two on the bottom, four oh six, four oh eight. Some of you will recognize, we built those during Women's Build. We should be dedicating those relatively soon. Habitat has probably about five or six other lots that they are working towards. Some of the larger projects, obviously not done by the CRA but supported by the CRA, would be Madison Terrace, which is, as you can see, well under construction. That would be a hundred and seventy-six units, all of them affordable to people fifty-five and older, making less than eighty percent of AMI, which is about probably about sixty thousand, but the majority of those units will be for people, it's actually less than that, so probably around thirty thousand. Um, then you'll also see on the right-hand side, Lake Worth Station, they've begun site preparation on that. That is ninety-one units. They're using county money for that, and seventy-eight of the ninety-one will be workforce housing. And they received a two hundred thousand dollar public infrastructure grant from us for the landscaping, because they have a separate little park area as well. This is Deco Green. You've probably seen this driving on Dixie Highway. I'm not positive they have their CO yet, uh, but a hundred and twenty-five residential units. These are market rate, one, two, and three bedroom. There's also office space there and also some retail. And they also received a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar infrastructure grant, because they had to redo all the water in the sewer. And one of our favorites, favorite projects, the Gulf Stream, as you can tell a little bit from the, from the picture on the right, they've also started construction. And in fact, if you go on the Marriott website, you can actually find the Gulf Stream, which is very exciting. A total of a hundred and forty rooms, eighty-three apartments, obviously, all of the other bells and whistles coming along. And we hear that they might be opening later this year, which would be fantastic. This is another project, a long, long time in the making. This is at Sixth Avenue and H. A private developer came and put together fourteen pieces of property and was going to do a market rate residential project. However, because it took quite a while to put it together and assemble it and all that, you know, market has changed. So he's working with Pinnacle, and Pinnacle Development is planning on doing a Lytec project, which would be for people earning less than eighty percent of area median income. Do you want me to get in? Um, I believe they're, they're planning on about ninety units, and they also have some lofts that will face Sixth Avenue that potentially could be live-work units, but planning is not complete on this yet. Infrastructure, last year, we partnered with the city and Public Services, and they did an absolutely fantastic job on the side streets between B and H. They repaved them, put all new striping on it. It has made such a difference. People, neighbors in the, in the area were really thrilled about it, new sidewalks, et cetera. We're hoping to continue that this year. Right now, we have about four hundred thousand dollars budgeted, but we're hoping maybe to find a little bit more and continue on, on the west side. Oh, um, these are some of our commercial projects, and we provide facade, interior improvements, signage, public infrastructure. All of these are matching grants, usually two to one. In the right-hand side, you'll see the railroad, fifteen twenty-seven railroad out, that's the AC lady. She's redoing that place. The lower left-hand corner, we have the Dominican Spot, which will be a Dominican restaurant right on Dixie Highway. Florida Window and Doors, El Rey Taco Place, right on Dixie Highway there. We also have Ruuz on Dixie, the Colony on Lucerne, that are both under construction, and soon, hopefully, we'll have seven oh two South Dixie, which will be a three-story law office in the south area. Last year, we had a new Last year, we had a a new uh, event called Art Wars. And we had um, public participation um, award for the one that the people liked the most, People's Award, Choice Awards, and then we had first, second, and third. So we decided to use the winners of those to go on on our banners on Dixie Highway. And then we did another contest, which I think is still open right now, where we're focusing on uh, native birds to do the rest of the box wraps that are located throughout the city. Um, the specific ones are listed to the right. I guess those are all um, natural birds here. Capture, um, if you remember, we did this last year. We did a photography um, contest. Some of them are still out here, but we are going to do new ones and replace the ones that are here. That is currently open. It was a really great event last year and we had a lot of public participation. Then on this Friday, wow, um, we have a tree giveaway. We're working with the Rotary, um, Healthier Lake Worth and and uh, community greening, giving away free trees over in the Cultural Plaza, about a hundred trees. And we decided to make it somewhat of a little event, so we'll have music and vendors and crafts as well. Um, marketing, we continue to do our marketing in um, magazines, in um, on print, a lot of digital kind of stuff. Uh, we tried to help get more cars parked in the um, in the Bohemian Garage. Uh, people are becoming more familiar with that and then riding on circuit. Um, we also, uh, at our next meeting, we'll be signing up with a marketing firm who will be um, taking over our marketing and doing um, citywide marketing for both the city and the CRA, which will be really exciting. Day of the Dead, right around the corner. Um, although right now we have artists of the Palm Beach over at Hatch, which we have probably about at least fifty different artists up right now, absolutely fantastic artwork. Um, we are preparing already for Day of the Dead, which is in November. We're having a T-shirt contest for people to design our T-shirts. We're having uh, something called Marigold's Memory and Magic, which is also a call to artists for them to participate with um, local schools. We do have funding this year from the state, but our funding for next year, as you probably know, got cut significantly. So we'll be looking for um, donations to try to make up that the gap that we have there. And finally, um, just talking a little bit about um, the Pro Housing Grant. So the four point four million dollars, um, we actually will be getting the line of credit probably within the next ten or so days. We finished our environmental on the entire city. Um, and that was approved by HUD. And once uh, the money comes, then we can um, start allocating some of the money. It goes to creating better policy. Um, as far as affordable housing is concerned, to try to streamline the process. It also goes to creating infrastructure for both private and nonprofit developers. And it also has gap financing specifically for nonprofit developers, which we're finding they're needing more and more. And lastly, uh, some of the money goes to homebuyer education. And we're also starting our Home Buyers Club up again with our community partners, partners. And those will start in September. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Can I ask a quick question? Yeah, Joan, can I ask you a quick question? Because I got it from one of the people. Uh, the building on the corner that used to be like the um, pharmacy?
Yes.
And Lucerne and
That's the colony, yes.
What what is that?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be office space.
Office space. Okay, thank you. We have one of the more active CRAs in the state of Florida and people know it when we show up. Yep. Okay, next is the uh, Fourth of July update from Tiana McKay.
Hi, everyone.
Where are you?
I'm down here. I sit down these days. Hello, everyone. Tiana McKay, Director of Leadership Services. And uh, we're just going to do a very quick update on our July Fourth celebrations. So
Kristy, can you turn that mic off? Maybe the
So first of all, uh, thank you to everyone who came out and took part in the festivities. You can see it there. Uh, this is just an example of our site plan, which was expanded this year. We did have some new features. We had our new um, a red, white, and booths market. So you'll see that in the vendor row. So these are some fun facts. We had uh, thirty-five local businesses that showcased. So this is, you know, your makers, your crafters, your artists. So some they might not have an um, somewhere to showcase at this time of year. And so we gave them an opportunity to do that and a big shout out to our special events team because they have been building our database since the night market. So that's just all of them and their hard work behind the scenes, collecting all that. So it was really exciting. Uh, we also had uh, Benny's Benny's on the Beach as our presenting sponsor. So thank you so much to them. That was just a big help to our um, our event and just shows good partnership with our local businesses. And the PBSO estimated that about eight thousand people attended. So I just want to kind of give you some ideas of the numbers. So uh, sponsorship and revenue, our sponsorships this year was significantly up and we had six thousand dollars in sponsors. And like I mentioned, because of that hard work by our special events team, we had over six thousand dollars in vendor fees, which is something that we haven't had before. So um, we also had a um, share of the bar sales. So that currently is what it's at, but we've learned some lessons on how to make that more visible for next year. Um, so our total revenue was thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-two from the event. What were the expenses? So big this year, uh, increased safety expenses. That's our barricades. Uh, we had ten thousand and then we had our operations. Uh, we also had our entertainment. That's your bands. Um, and we had the fireworks, which was fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty, uh, which is a reduced amount than what was actually budgeted in the city budget. We're going to get to that next. So after this, so our total expenses were forty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-five. So what does that look like for the city? The expenses were thirty thousand seven hundred and sixty-three, which was on par with what we were budgeting originally for this event. So let's talk about the fireworks. We, I just wanted to say, um, you know, we did hear we, we did hear um, comments from residents and we completely understand that uh, there was some disappointment with our fireworks. For those that may not know, the fireworks were supposed to start at nine and they didn't start till uh, closer to nine-thirty. And there were some gaps. This is an outside contractor that we do contract to handle the fireworks. And to be honest, there was no one more disappointed than us who worked so hard for months to put this together. So as much as everyone else was feeling it, we were feeling it uh, pretty hard too. So the company experienced technical difficulties, gave a full report on that to me. The contract that we currently have started in twenty twenty-three and is uh, goes for three years and is done in twenty twenty-six. So we do have two options here, uh, which I'm bringing to the commission. We can cancel the contract and issue an RFP and try to find a better, a new firework company. Or we can complete the contract and they've uh, offered an extra show. The same as what had happened only in twenty twenty-two with the same company. And the challenge was that is that staff doesn't want to disappoint the residents again. So that's what we're bringing to you today. We just, again, publicly wanted to apologize to our residents. And you know, it wasn't us, but the event itself, as the director, I just want to say how proud I am of this team because this event was much more organized. It was much safer. It had more elements of a strong event, the marketing, our public PIO on point. Like everything about this event was on point and they all worked really, really hard. So as a director and as the commission, you should be very proud of your team. And so that's what I'd really like to highlight today is how great they did. And also just one more thing before we get to it, just say thank you to the NAPC because without them, we don't have our RAFALE race, which was a huge part of it. So thank you, all the small businesses that participated, the vendors, our community partners like PBSO and Palm Beach County Fire and Rescue. And again, like I mentioned, our staff. So that's the update for July Fourth. If anyone has any comments they'd like to share.
Well, thank you very much. And really, the staff is amazing. The amount of work that you all put in on a day that's a hot day, that's a lot going on. We really appreciate everything. It's, you know, the lead up to it. So thank you very much. When you talk about the second fireworks for the Halloween.
Yes.
Would that be for this year and next year?
Just this year. So also I did want to mention, we did have a reduced fee. So what was budgeted was thirty thousand, but we're not paying that full amount for this contract because of the services.
So they would do fourteen thousand plus an extra show.
An extra show. And then we would continue the contract for next year.
One more year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McBoy, you were up first.
Um, unrelated to the fireworks, uh, I just wanted to say that I was very grateful to staff for making a space for me and my wife and a high school student from Lakewood High School, who uh, I can't remember if this is our third year or only second year, but we set up a science table and it was initially a little quiet. The attendance was a little low at the beginning, but it picked up and a lot of uh, interested. An interesting comment from Karim was um, how much the interest was from parents in addition to kids. And that was fun. We so we had a lot of people doing hands-on science things and thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, the same as last year. I couldn't say hi to you because you were so busy the entire time. So yes, thank you.
You should be a teacher. You are such a good teacher. Um, Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the update.
Mm-hmm.
I do not partake in fireworks, um, but I heard that it was a great success. I would be in favor of canceling the contract and issuing an RFP personally. This is the second time we've been through this with this company and they are representing the city because everybody points the finger to the city and thinks that the staff's over there with lighters trying to put fireworks and they are not.
Risk management.
Yeah. Where's Teresa?
Yeah.
Stay far away. I would also like to see if there's any support for entertaining. And I know the oyster catchers, don't scream, but doing a drone show, which is much more environmentally friendly for our intercoastal, it's safer. You'll have more people attend like myself who have PTSD and who can't do fireworks. I would just personally like to see a cost assessment of drones versus fireworks because fireworks, you can have major technical issues, drones you can as well, but they're also a lot safer. So that's my feeling.
All right, we can, I I I support looking into both of them. Um, I think drones, I think for the money drones are, it's it's not, it's gotta be, any show's gotta be impressive. And it'll be interesting to see what impressive show would be for a drone show for how much money. So I agree with that. Mr. Um, Savage.
I would, I would support Commissioner Malaga's suggestion.
Okay. Uh, Mr. McBoy.
Similarly, that um, and I I don't know how we deal with the oyster catcher part, but I'm sure that we can talk to people and find out if that's possible. Yeah, I I don't know how that fits with their breeding season and all that stuff, but there are people who do know. And uh, I would support at least looking into it.
Okay.
I always hear of people, you know, vets, dogs that are freaked out, PTSD. We have a lot of vets in the community and other people. So um, let's at least bring back to the commission.
Excellent suggestion, Vice Mayor, and we have consensus to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, let's do the consent agenda before we do public participation. Do I have a
For all the minutes, please.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, is there minutes?
Don't we have public participation?
We're doing this, we're what, Mr.?
Um, I I forget exactly which meeting it was, but we were talking about the risk, um, the disaster um, contracts. We got consensus to have staff look at um, water and mold remediation disaster contracts. And I didn't see that in any of the minutes.
Because that usually, Melissa can correct me, but when we have consensus like that, the minutes are only reflective of what is on the agenda normally.
It's usually in there marked as action.
What which agenda was, what they
I believe it was live first.
Um, um, thank you, Commissioner. Madam Mayor, thank you, Commissioner. I do put consensus in as it is an action. So I will relook at that um, meeting and add it in to the final, final minutes.
So can we do Motion to approve with the adjustment on July first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, public participation of non-agenda items and so we up for that now. Okay. Uh, July, Laura Levitz, Laura Levitz?
Levitis, thank you. Ouch.
Make, turn the mic on.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, um, I was a vendor at the, I was a vendor at the July fourth event.
Can you state your name and address?
Laura Levitis, ten thirty North Lakeside Drive, Lake Worth Beach, three-three-four-six-oh. Anything else? Typo blood? All right. I was a vendor at the July fourth event. It bothers me to see that I just saw six thousand dollars of the revenue came from vendors, which was like half. I spent a hundred and eighty-seven dollars to be a vendor. It was empty there. I sold T-shirts between twenty and twenty-five dollars. I sold one. It was very, very empty and sparse. Not only that, they had food there. I wanted to get some corn. It was fifteen dollars. It was not affordable for anybody. We were told that it was also light. A couple of people came up to me and my friends because they're scared that ICE is gonna come. And I understand that and it's horrible. But that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, one more thing.
What was the um, what was the total of people last year compared to this year?
We don't actually answer questions from up here, but that's something that
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Give us a call. We're all our, all our numbers are in the phone, on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alex Schultz, followed by Sue Welch. I did say I used to have a Yellow Page ad. What happened? I love my Yellow Page. No, anyway. Name and address, please.
Alex Schultz, six twelve Second Avenue South. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm gonna basically just talk about the pool and normally I'm, the last thing on my mind is a pool. But on my way from my monthly visit down in Delray, and I think I sent you copies of the beautiful photos. I was speaking to my sister in uh, Vero and she was mentioning that she had been sending money to my sister in Pittsburgh for swimming lessons. And then the next morning on TV, I'm listening to the local news and they're talking about a pool being torn down slash pool in the uh, Lake Worth area. And they had mentioned the issue of this, that children now will not be able to have a pool to have swimming lessons. And why that struck me so much is that May of last year, my late brother's seven-year-old grandson, after a visit to Hershey Park drowned at the hotel pool. And so I just started thinking about all, over the years, all the money the city has spent, particularly from the penny sales tax that could have been used on the pool. Two point four-six million that went into the Bohemian Garage, landscaping for the two point nine million project on the Park of Commerce between uh, Lake uh, Lake Worth Road and Tenth Avenue North. And uh, from time to time, we put money into the Lucerne where they have a pool. We brought it out as this town residents, we yeah, we supported that project, the Bohemian. They have a pool. We gave them money. Uh, the mid, they have a pool. We want to have have remote apartments. They're gonna have a pool. So all this money, we've helped give people money for a pool for out-of-town residents, while the homeowners whose parents fought in World War II and some gave their lives. It's just like, we're we're getting a museum instead of a pool. And
Oh, we don't, please, don't.
And what I would have liked to have heard from the CRA, some explanation of what's happening with one thousand Lake Avenue. He had the picture of vanilla ice up there. That property is, we've had that for fifteen years. And Oakland Partners, we've given them almost a million in discounts on purchase of property. And I don't know, we've had a single success, but in the past fifteen years of the CRA downtown. You take a look at the uh, uh, Lucerne Apartments vacancies there. And it's so overwhelming. That's one of the bad images you have when you come to this town. And um, I thank everybody. But like I said, I'd like to see the CRA address some of the issues that are, have not been successes.
Thank you. Sue, Sue Welch, Sue Welch, followed by Victoria Doyle.
Can, can you put New New Welch first? Because her card's in there and I'm just coming up to support.
New New Welch. Oh, New New Welch, yes, I can. Now it's on. There you go.
It's on.
You're gonna say your name?
Your name and address first, please. Don't say your name.
I'm Nunu and this is my mom.
Your address?
Um, our address is thirteen thirty-one North Palm Way and we're here to request our bounce house back. Since I was a baby, the Lake Worth.
Golf course?
Golf course has always had a bounce house.
On Family Friday.
On Family Friday. And for the past month, um, it hasn't been here and we requested it to be back.
Um, we did talk to Mitch at the golf course and he said he was told by Leisure Services that it was a liability. And he says he procured the appropriate, um, insurance paperwork, but was still denied permission to have the bounce house. I understand that it sounds like from what we heard in this meeting that the city is, oh, this is Sue Welch. Um, the city's been doing a lot of research on risk abatement. Well, it needs to be tempered with the expectations of what the community uses. So, um, we were there and she was like, I wanna go to City Hall and tell them.
Good. Absolutely. We congratulate you for coming forward. Um, and we will look into that. Um, I see Mr. Brown making a note about it. Cause I know it was there forever.
Yeah.
On Friday nights.
Okay, so.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Don't miss our splash days coming up this weekend.
That's right. Um, Sue, did you wanna say something? That was it?
All right, great. Good job. Good job, Mom and Dad.
I love. I, absolutely. That's what I have to think of. Janet Serrano, followed by Victoria Doyle.
Hi, Janet Serrano, four thirteen North L Street. Um, I was going to the beach club the day to meet with some friends for lunch and noticed along the way on the posters east of Federal, um, couple blocks in, there was this poster.
Um, oh, yeah.
Can I show it to the audience?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, it's just not there, you know, the thing.
Right.
So I took it down because I know that it's city policy not to have these things on our poles. And I can see why, because you see, when I took it down, it took the paint off the pole. So I can see that it's an issue for the city, but also because on such an important project, I don't want to see this kind of distortion of the facts out there. Whether you're pro or con against the project, I think you need to pay attention to the facts and not to this kind of distortion. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for taking it. Uh, Victoria Doyle, followed by Todd Townsend.
Good evening. Victoria Doyle, nine twenty North Gulfview Road. Relatedly, I would like to address a conspiracy theory that has emerged from the Stop Womota camp. It goes like this. The contract between the Weiner Museum and the city of Lake Worth does not mention a museum. Lake Worth therefore is being tricked into giving land away for free with no requirement to build a museum. So the developer can build whatever he wants. This is a false claim and it's unhelpful to the process. Like that poster distorting the amount that the city will be spending on the project, which is must let, much less than nineteen million. It is unhelpful to our democracy to inject conspiracy theories and fear mongering. If you can't persuade others on the merits with facts, please don't make shit up. One more criticism that I've gotten a lot of, it's a vanity project. And to that I have to say this, some rich people buy massive yachts and some buy mansions all over the world and some buy art. Art collectors often decide to share their collection with the public, which for art lovers is a wonderful thing. They don't have to. There are monumental paintings and sculptures all over the world we will never see because rich people keep them in their private houses. Examples abound of collectors who have opted to open public spaces and display their art. Locally, we have the bunker in West Palm Beach. That's Beth Rubin de Woody's massive private collection, which is jaw dropping. Modern and contemporary art, it's open seasonally by appointment. I highly recommend it. The Rubel Museum in Miami, that's a couple called the Rubels who collected for sixty years, built a museum in Miami and show off their work. That's open regularly. Going back in time, of course, we have the Whitney Museum, the Frick Collection, on and on. The upside of a vanity project, in my opinion, is that the namesake is not gonna want his legacy to fail. So that might be an incentive to get even more than sixty-five million dollars for our new museum. Anyway, despite the snarling, I remain a steadfast supporter and I note that last Thursday, the Palm Beach Cultural Center had an opening. It was well attended and joyful as they always are. And one of the featured artists is a local glass artist named Eli Cecil. He ran the Ben Zitton Glass Center for several years and his work is absolutely gorgeous. I met him at the opening and I mentioned that he would be a great candidate to have a show at the Womota. Well, he was beaming and he said, you know what I'd really love? To live in one of the Live Work Studios, cause I've been priced out of Lake Worth Beach. So I thought that was a poignant anecdote to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is, uh, Todd Townsend.
Hi, Todd Townsend, five oh two South J Street. Regarding reduced parking and the whole Womota project? How about a nice little class action lawsuit concerning parking on H Street? Versus Womota Downtown Parking and its folly garage. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Uh, and also let's do a tree giveaway to cover up for our plans to clear cut places that should be, uh, parks, all under Womota auspice. So watch out, cause it's being organized. Looking at it now on H Street, no parking there. You can't park there at night, but you're gonna give parking away to Womota and just do whatever they want?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you, oh, we don't. Okay, so moving on.
No, but I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
To address Commissioner Segred's, um, uh, point about the consensus being missing, actually, the consensus was on the utility minutes.
He stands.
July twenty-fourth utility minute. So I make plenty of mistakes. I did not make that one. And Shayla did include it on the July twenty-fourth minutes, which will be on the next utility meeting.
Thank you very much for looking that up so promptly. Okay, great. Uh, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus C, which has been moved to, um, wherever we move it. New business, new business, C, or D? C.
New business.
New business, C.
D.
So a motion to approve consent agenda A, B, D, and E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, discussion or evaluation on evaluation process. Proposals for the executive recruitment services for the city manager, unfinished business A. Um, here you are. Here she is.
Here I am.
Good evening, Valentina Sustado, Assistant Finance Director for Purchasing.
You need to speak up a little bit.
I need to yell. Okay. Valentina Sustado, Assistant Finance Director for Purchasing. Um, so I wanted, uh, to kind of go with you today through the process of where we are currently. Um, so we issued the RFP for the executive recruitment services for city manager on May eleventh. Uh, by June eleventh, we received the seven proposals. You have all received the packages online and a, in a hard copy in your offices. And today I just wanted to go through, uh, the process that we have planned, just to make sure that you're comfortable with that. Um, so, uh, on the twenty-eighth evening, we have scheduled first evaluation meeting. This evaluation meeting is, uh, for you to, uh, discuss all seven proposals and potentially shortlist, uh, top three. Or at that meeting, you can also decide to, uh, go ahead and move with the recommendation for the award. If you decide to, uh, shortlist, uh, top three, uh, then we're going to have to schedule a next evaluation meeting where we're going to have, uh, three top, um, or shortlisted presenters to come in, provide a presentation for you. And then after that, we will have, uh, the, followed by the meeting, you're gonna be given a little bit of time to evaluate again and then, uh, make a decision in the public evaluation meeting on, um, on the final respondent. The second meeting. We have not scheduled the second meeting. We are going to schedule it after tonight, after we confirm that you are comfortable with that, uh, process.
And I'm, I'm looking at the July twenty-eighth. Maybe I'm wrong. Don't we have all the work done?
That's the twenty-first.
I always pencil the minimum, but, uh, thank you.
It is at six o'clock on the twenty-eighth. Yes, it's on your calendars.
Yes, we'll get it. Okay. Thank you very much. Any, um, Ms. May and Mr.?
Thank you. Um, I just have a quick question for you. You said if we wanted to shortlist three, we could. Is that a, a solid number or could four?
You can pick, you can, you can pick, uh, minimum three. So we can go three to five.
Okay, so basically, if we wanted to hear from the.
More than three, you can.
Right, but if, so basically on the twenty-eighth, if we wanted to hear from the respondents directly.
They're not going to be available.
That, that day, but it, so if we do wanna hear from them, then they need to be on that list for the following meeting is what you're saying?
Yes.
I think you for clarifying.
Yes.
Yeah, so that they can.
Yes, we will, we will shortlist and then hear from those that were shortlisted at that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And just a similar clarification, in the language, it says, um, we can choose to award to the highest ranked.
Yes.
Does it have to be the highest ranked or, you know, cause I know based on the point system and so on, someone might score higher in, in the points. But if we think number two is the way to go, would we be able to do that or we would have to shortlist first?
Well, we have a five evaluators and I'm, um, gonna look at, uh, city attorney. We had this question before, um. Five evaluators are going to have a different points and so everybody's going to score them based on that. So, uh, the fair would be to award to those that everybody collectively scored the highest. Chris, did you wanna add anything? Because then if we, everybody scores this particular firm as, you know, top and they have, let's say, three hundred points. And then the second one has a two hundred and ninety-five points, they are not the highest as evaluated by everybody.
In, in the case where, let's say somebody has a real objection with, what happened to score the highest? Is it, is it legal for us to choose number two?
Or, and, and we had a bit of a kerfuffle, I think it was last year about something, where we were under the impression here that we could, you know, do a first vote and then we, we sort of think about it and that did not happen. And a couple of us were like, well, I want to, so, um, sometimes it's helpful when we hear each other talk about what pros and cons of different groups are to change, you know, the points a little bit.
Right, so what Valentina says, initial, initial evaluation, the highest ranked, it gets awarded. But if you want to keep considering and having that discussion to go pros and cons and then reevaluate your scores, you absolutely can. But ultimately, the one who gets the highest score is who you would direct the award to. But that scoring can happen through several evaluations after further discussion.
Okay, yeah, I, I like that because we were, I felt a little stuck about, forget what it was, but it was, Mr. McBoy.
Um, my only question, I guess, and I don't know that it's a very useful question, but I'll try it anyhow. Um, one of the things it seems to be how these firms, basically headhunting firms work, is that they'll have a pool of folks that they're putting up, you know, as potential candidates. Is there any way for us in our evaluating of the, I believe, seven contenders right now, for us to learn anything about the pool that each one has?
So what we can do.
And I'm sure it's not possible to learn about actual names or things that, cause that's part of the later process. But, uh, some way of getting some idea, uh, you know, all of the applicants from, from firm X are from Hawaii or from Alaska and have no experience with hurricanes or something. Is, is it possible for us to get any of that? So. To our evaluation?
Yes.
Of the pool or characteristics of the pool that each one, now, it could be that all seven firms all reach to the same pool. I don't believe that's the case generally in the industry. If it is, then it's a, my question is moot. But if it's not, then it might be a relevant question.
So what we could do, and the next meeting after we decide of who we are going to shortlist, we can add additional questions that we can then provide to those shortlisted firms. And when they come in, they can address those questions in their presentation. So if there is anything that is unclear in their, uh, proposals, or if you notice something that is that you wanna hear more about, we're going to request that. And when they come in here to provide a presentation, we will ask them to address those things.
That would be in round two after we.
Yes, that's correct, but not before. Yes.
I was just gonna say quickly to kind of address your concern, having done executive recruiting at this level, a pool of candidates is really non-existent. Um, if people are just sitting there waiting for a job in a pool, you probably don't want them and for a search of this level, usually they're going out headhunting, like literally trying to poach people for lower level candidates than, than your comment and concern, I think, would be warranted. But I think that's a great question to ask them when we come back in shortlist. Um, what, you know, how do they build their, their candidate pool? Um, and what's their strategy for doing that?
Uh, one, one thing also to, to add, once you have your consulting firm, you're going to be giving that firm a direction of what you're looking for. So we're just going to, at this point, choose the company that you feel that is the most qualified to help you through this process.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Are you comfortable with the process? I, but we are. So, um, is there consensus to follow this process?
Yep.
Consent for me.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Malaga that I, I think it's unfortunate we're doing it. It's probably an expense and certainly a lot of time and energy, but.
I, I honestly really hate that we're doing this right now in the middle of so many things.
But we're always in the middle, I know, but.
And I, I just feel like, I don't know, I'm, I'm just as heartened that we're here again.
Yeah, well. So I, whoops, where'd you go? Oh, there you are.
I am still here.
So it's sounding like we have consensus to go ahead with the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I know, please, we've been through this already. Okay, now we are at, uh, appointment of, we, we moved B all the way down to the bottom, correct? Okay, new business appointed member and alternate to the citywide multi-jurisdictional issues forum. Um, it's an interesting group. Does anyone wanna make any, a motion to appoint? I'll pass the gavel.
I appoint me, I, I make a motion to appoint Mimi May, Commissioner May.
Do I have a second? Can I second myself?
No, no, no.
Can she second herself? Probably not.
Be poor form.
Poor form.
I'm gonna pass the gavel to the Vice Mayor.
And I'm gonna second it.
She wants it back.
Oh, I've never used it. I've never used it. I have been tempted.
I know.
I have been tempted. So, um, all in favor of Mimi?
Aye.
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 And there's an alter.
I, I make a motion to, um, nominate Anthony Segred to be the alternate.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to both of you.
Really, it's, it's an interesting group. Um, appointment of member and alternate to the intergovernmental Plan Amendment Review Committee two point O, IPARC two point O. This is traditionally where the city manager and William Waters are on it. Um, can we have?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Motion to appoint, you mean?
Appoint, approve.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion.
Uh, Mr. Brown and, uh, Mr. Waters.
Okay, second that.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're getting to the ordinance, um, first reading, amending the city code to provide that participation. In the city's pension plan will be frozen for the person holding the position of city clerk. Uh, please read by title.
I, I thought we were putting the consent agenda C here.
D, they're just together. They're both gonna be together, one after the other.
But would, wouldn't we want?
Consent C is now new business C, uh, D.
Would it, before we go to that though, would, would it make sense to put the resolution first and the ordinance second?
Madam Attorney?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, I believe, since the settlement pertains to this ordinance, I believe it would be best to have the resolution first.
Yeah, thank you. So this was full resolution thirty-six, twenty twenty-five, approving the settlement agreement, let me just get to the page. Okay, Mr. McBoy, you pulled this?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm not the subject expert on this resolution, but I would like to say, I just, in any kind of settlement agreement, I would just advise caution, because obviously we're settling a potential claim, whether this particular settlement agreement or something for a personal injury case. So I would just advise caution, depending on what it is we're gonna talk about and if we need to potentially move it off the agenda to have one-on-one conversations about a settlement, just a cautionary note.
And I appreciate that. Now, what about having, could we have a closed session if there's no lawsuit filed?
Correct, if, if there's no lawsuit filed, it's, it could still be considered a claim.
Right.
Now, there's an exemption, the sunshine law for claims, but what I usually recommend is having one-on-one conversations to address any issues that there might be regarding a settlement before we engage a public discussion of something that could be very sensitive, that could end up in litigation.
And we all had like ten days to do that, to have those one-on-ones or ask questions.
Yeah, we have time, okay.
So just a word of caution.
Okay, so does somebody want to act, make an appropriate motion?
I would move then that the resolution and the ordinance both be tabled until we all have the opportunity to have a discussion with one-on-ones, I guess, with, I would like for an attorney to be present from the city and HR, that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
And it's fine with me to have the resolution and ordinance be addressed at the same time.
Mr. Sagrich? What? I'm waiting for a second. Are you, no, okay, any second? Having a second, the motion fails. What, what's, what's next?
Motion to approve resolution thirty-six dash two zero two five, City Lake Worth Beach, Florida. Approving a settlement agreement with an employee of appeal of conflicts, providing a severability clause and effective date and for other purposes. God bless you. That wasn't part of my. Strike that from the record.
Well, the resolution is approving the settlement agreement, no release.
They approve the resolution first? Yeah, that was my.
Okay, Mr. McBoy?
The comment from the city attorney comes as news to me, so I don't know quite what to do with that. And the comment, probably for legal reasons, is a bit vague. Be careful what one says, I don't know what that means. So I don't know how to be careful or what to be careful about. But I need to express that I did have an opportunity in my one-on-one to ask about this. And I was very uncomfortable with the responses that I received. And they basically said, ask about it at the meeting and ask the HR and the attorneys. I'm now being told that I cannot do that or it would be unwise, I do not wish to go against the recommendations to be careful, whatever that means. But I have to say that I expressed in my one-on-ones and continue to feel a high degree of uncomfortableness that we are doing something with a resolution and an ordinance that apparently only one employee out of four hundred odd employees it applies to. And it's a little unclear what the pros and cons are, and I was not able to get any clear answer. I'm very uncomfortable with this situation and I am even more uncomfortable when I'm apparently being told I cannot ask for clarification for either myself, my commission or the community. And I'm very uncomfortable that we would vote on it in that circumstance.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I can certainly understand, and quite frankly, I, I am not, again, as I mentioned, the subject expert on this resolution or the ordinance. I was just saying it from a basic standpoint of whenever there's a settlement agreement, that's usually why we put it on consent, so we don't engage in a public discussion of something that would end up in litigation. I certainly defer to our HR director if she wants to provide some clarity on this, but since I don't know the, the legal reasoning behind it, I can't provide that clarity in general terms to you. So I apologize for that, but I was just trying to be cautionary, anytime there's a settlement that gets pulled off consent, I get a little nervous.
I, I, I think your caution makes sense. I was not aware that this was potentially litigous, litigous, is that a word? That one. I, I respect the wish to perhaps not have a public discussion about it. I don't know if that's good policy or not, but I respect the legal arguments for doing it. I would suggest that we not vote on it now until we get a bit, because I, I don't know whether anybody else had any questions or had some. But I, the response I got from staff was very alarming. That's all I can say.
Thank you. My question is, what's the fiscal impact of this for the city?
Yeah. Can't ever tell.
Okay, the fiscal impact is actually.
Say who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lauren Slayden, HR Director. Okay, I'd like to say the fiscal impact is actually positive for the city because currently the city clerk is in the defined benefit pension plan where, you know, we have a couple of different versions of it depending what time of year you're hired. But no matter what version you're in, the city contributes twenty-two point eighteen percent of your salary into that pension plan annually. So by taking her out of the pension plan, we had the actuaries do an analysis, there is no financial impact on the pension plan itself. And we, we lower our contribution from twenty-two point eighteen percent for the employee to ten percent to the four one A. So it's actually a positive fiscal impact for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Sagrich?
That was one of the many questions that I had asked staff and they, they gave me the satisfactory answer to that. The only kind of question I had on it was, is it necessary to have the ordinance to memorialize this? Or, you know, is it just an exception to an HR policy?
No, it's necessary to have the ordinance. Anytime you change anything with the pension plan, it has to be by ordinance. Trust me, if I didn't have to be here twice, I wouldn't. Love all you guys and love seeing you.
I would like to thank staff because I, I did have a lot of questions on it and, and they were all answered and we discussed it on Friday and so I'm, I'm prepared to move forward.
Great, okay, thank you.
We did talk about it at the pre-agenda meeting too.
Yes, we did. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye for process.
Mr. McBoy's in a, all right, next up is.
And that was.
So I don't know what we're calling it in what number D, it's the ratification of a collective bargaining.
No, no, we gotta go back to the ordinance now to accompany the resolution.
Oh, right, well, okay, so.
Business D.
Okay.
That would be.
Please be by title.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh nine of the City Lake Worth Beach, Florida. Amending chapter sixteen pensions and retirement, article two, employees' retirement system, division two, pension plan, section sixteen dash twenty-six, participation in the pension plan, section sixteen dash forty-four, cash balance plan created, and section sixteen dash forty-six, eligibility to no longer permit a specified employee to actively participate in the pension plan, provided for severability, the repeal of laws and conflicts, codification and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I opposed for the same reason, process.
Okay, next up is the, next up is the ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lake Worth and the Lake Worth Beach Public Employees Union.
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Next up is the agreement.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I'm having a difficult time hearing the seconder.
Oh, sorry.
Seconder was Maliga.
And for the previous item, I'm sorry.
Maliga and May.
Okay, for, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did we just do ratification of collective bargaining?
We did.
Yes, agreement for curb management technologies with related services between Lake Worth and the IPS Group. Do I have a second?
Second by May.
Thank you. You, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Next, task order number nineteen with WGI Consulting Services relating to the downtown parking and residential parking permit program.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, there's public curb management. We're going so fast right now. I did have a public comment for F, or I guess it's now F, it was E. The curb management, are we on?
We, we already voted on that.
We did that already.
Okay.
Sorry. That's okay. Yeah, we wanted to read it so we hear what they'd say.
Okay, so the one comment from Sam Smith, one oh nine North Palm Way. I am against paid parking in downtown Lake Worth or other parts of Lake Worth Beach. We do not need or want paid parking in our downtown. Having free parking sets us apart from other destinations and encourages people to come and patronize our businesses and enjoy our downtown. Long before we start talking about paid parking, the city should, one, get the valet parking under control. Oceano is still blocking off four parking spots in front of its location. Two, enforce the parking rules we currently have, i.e. give out tickets to people who stay beyond the allotted time. I believe it's four hours at present. Three, perhaps no, modify downtown parking rules going from four hours to two hours and increase enforcement. Four, create an employee parking system that requires businesses to have their employees park at the Bohemian Garage. As a result, the proposal is premature and I urge you to vote no. There are many good steps that can be taken by the city to address any parking issues before we convert our free parking to paid parking throughout the city. Let's hit pause on ordering paid parking stations. No one in the city is in favor of paid parking.
Thank you. So the task, and now we're task for.
Hold on.
Oh, so I, I, I heard that comment and I just want to have the city manager, if you wouldn't mind. Can you clarify what that curb? Yeah. The curb management technologies, because that has nothing to do with anything that we don't already do. And I'd like you to make that clear.
That's correct. And that item that I just gave you, Madam Mayor, was, that was originally F, which is now, I guess, since we moved the consent item to new business, but I think what the clerk just read is, Madam Clerk, was that for this item or is that for the next item?
I think it was.
For the paid part.
It's for this item and there was pretty much the same comment for the next item, so just to let everybody know, I will not be reading duplicate comments and I will not be reading comments submitted by dead people.
Mr. Brown, I think that what they, someone was saying was that that he thought that maybe this was something that we were going to do, not something we already did.
Correct. I have a promise our parking manager explained that particular item and the software and the equipment.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, commissioners and mayor. The curb management parking agreement is for IPS enforcement, which we use for issue citations and also meter collection, and this is what we use to, to enforce the city, throughout the city and downtown and the beach. That is our enforcement software system.
This is curb management, kind of like, you know, fix the curbs. Okay, thank you.
So, so just to clarify, so that is what we currently utilize, the equipment we currently utilize, so this is just, this is not any additional or something new to us.
Yeah, so this is just T N M K, Director of Legal Services, so this is a program we're already using, we're renewing a contract. Already, these are where we receive our revenue, citations, our hard equipment, what the parking enforcement officers use, it's the rental of the equipment. It's nothing new, this is something we're already using.
Thank you. Thank, Mr. McBoy, you have a comment?
Mine is for the WGI one, which I don't think, I'm not sure whether we're on it, we voted on the curb.
I'm a little confused, we're sort of backtracking with the curb thing here. Okay, so then, thank you very much, and I think we're on now to task order number nineteen with WGI for consulting services relating to the downtown parking and residential parking permit program, which I think is Mr. Smith's comment that you read, Madam Clerk, okay. So do I have a motion?
I'm sorry, are we doing motions and then comments? Because I do have quite a few comments on this.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, so let's hear, so let's have, we have one comment here, Mr. Schultz.
I have to go to bed.
Break.
Well, let's, Mr. Schultz.
Want to do a break first? Okay, okay.
Anxious.
Well, I'm seventy, I'll be seventy-two, so I know. I'm for a contract with, Alex Schultz, six twelve, Second Avenue South. I'm for doing a contract with WGI, but I think it should be modified. What I think we need to do is have WGI come in and re-verify the conclusions regarding the twenty twenty-four parking study. Yeah, that, that study's false, it's blatantly false. They, they should, number one, they should do it on a twelve-month basis because it was only done for the high season without, and the city staff predetermined the results. And WGI should independently determine the impact of paid parking on parking demand and the number of downtown businesses that will close from the loss of business rising from implementation of paid parking. I think we should implement a trial basis paid parking using QR code signs. That way we can quickly pull back if we find out we have a devastating impact and it can be promptly repealed. The city should demand that WGI should first provide to the city a copy of the twenty twenty parking study update that the city does not have. They referred to the twenty twenty parking study, we don't have a copy, if they have a copy, they should give it to us. The Bohemian generates thirty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars in revenue a year, that's two blocks away. That's twenty-seven times as much, and the twenty twenty-four parking study predicts for the K Street Garage, one million, ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So the, that's twenty-seven times the amount the Bohemian generates in a year. The twenty eighteen WGI parking study for downtown structure projected one hundred and forty-seven, four hundred and ninety-six a year. So the twenty-four study is projecting almost seven times as much as the independent twenty eighteen parking study that WGI did. There's something wrong and we, we need to get to the bottom of this. WGI needs to independently come in and verify the data. Right now we have a false parking study, I think we're approaching RICO. You go to the Bohemian study, you see what's happening here, I think we're running into a RICO situation if we don't first verify the facts related to the twenty twenty-four study.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a comfort break and we'll have the other public comments when we're back. Get comfortable, everybody. Get comfortable, everybody.
I've been at the hospital.
I was anxious to get back to work, and I sat in there, and it was like, my lady was.
Madam Mayor, it is seven forty-five, and we are, I'm sorry, seven forty-four, and we are still live.
We're live again. Thank you very much. Okay, now, we, you were gonna read some comments from the public on this WGI issue? Ma'am? I thought.
I'm sorry, yes, I muted myself.
But first, Mr. Brown's gonna speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so on this item, before we go over to the comments, so this task order is for the actual putting together a program. Should we want to move forward with a downtown paid parking program? So in order to do that, we obviously have to put together a lot of different things or a lot of components to it, because we've obviously never had one, but we were setting the actual perimeter for what would actually be enforced. There's a residential decal part to that. There is, oh, we need to look at employee parking for businesses downtown. Just a lot of different components that would have to come together. So this is to basically start that process. So we have something that we can bring back to everyone in a draft format. So you guys have something tangible, like a baseline set to look off of. Okay, where can we go from here? Do we need to see if we can scale this up, down, whatever that happens to be? But we need to start at some point, so.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, you want to read the public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Sam Smith, one oh nine North Palm Way. I am against paid parking or permit parking system in downtown Lake Worth or other parts of Lake Worth Beach. We do not need or want paid parking in our downtown. Having free parking sets us apart from other destinations and encourages people to come and patronize our businesses and enjoy our downtown. Long before we start talking about paid parking, the city should, well, the same four things I just previously read, and as a result, this proposal is premature, and I urge you to vote no. There are many good steps that can be taken by the city to address any parking issues before we hire a consultant to convert our free parking to paid parking and paid permit parking throughout the city. Next is from Peggy Swenson, three thirty North Palm Way. Regarding parking, I'd really like to see a thought-out plan. Who gets parking permits within the neighborhood residential areas? If any, and where? What revenue is expected, and how has that been measured, and how is this enforced? Pana Giotti Zolcus, eight twenty-two North C Street. I'm a homeowner and resident of the city and a member of the group Lake Worth for All. Regarding the plans for the city-initiated, wait a minute. I'm sorry, that's the wrong comment. Kim Stokes, thirteen twenty-one North L Street. I think it's great that you have an extra five point seven million from last year. I think it's odd to start spending it outside of the normal budget process, where you can see all the needs of the city and prioritize them in order to make wise decisions. But this commission has a record of not operating that way. Millions were spent during a budget update and made some pretty big mis-steps, including funding projects. The golf course manager wasn't even there to confirm he would prioritize before reversing the vote and then funding a light pole project that didn't even exist. Contractual agreements with developers were rushed into, where they get ten million in incentives and the promise of an eight point five million dollar parking garage to help offset their own parking shortfalls, while they guarantee nothing in writing in return other than building their buildings. This is another case where you are rushing into an expensive contract. Do not rush into an overhaul of the city's parking system until you have optimized all available alternatives and piloted a paid parking system to see if it will work. Next is Thomas Convoy, thirty South M Street. We do not need to pay for another empty parking garage. No one wants paid parking downtown. Without paid parking on the street, no one will pay to park in the garage. This is economic stupidity. Diane Brown, nine oh five North Lakeside Drive. Before the commission makes an agreement at a cost of a hundred and three thousand four hundred and forty dollars to put in paid parking and a residential parking permit district, have you surveyed the downtown businesses about how they feel about paid parking and how it will affect their business? A pilot paid parking study should come first. This is unfortunate, the direction the commission is taking our wonderful city. Sienna Mayor's, four two nine North D Street. No one wants paid parking downtown. This is a terrible idea for residents and for the few small businesses that are already struggling to stay afloat. And forgive me, but I copied the wrong comment, because now this is F, and I looked at G, so let me read, read Mr. Zolcus's actual comment. I'm a homeowner and resident of the city and a member of the group Lake Worth for All. The plans for WGI for consulting services relating to the downtown, to downtown parking are also all around asinine. The only way to make sense of this parking plan is to look closely at the, at the influence of the Womota developer, Arthur Weiner, who is standing to make millions off public land as pushing it on us and using his influence over our CRA and city staff to get his way. We need our commissioners to stop accommodating this bad plan. We need you to stand up to this, stand up for us. Continuing to pursue this paid parking plan in tandem to Womota has a negative impact on me, my family, and my fellow members of the Lake Worth for All. It erodes our quality of life, worsens traffic, hurts downtown businesses and the local economy, and is a massive waste of local county and state taxes intended to improve public infrastructure. That's the last comment for this item.
Thank you. We have one more public comment here. Peggy Fisher?
Peggy Fisher, five oh eight North A Street. First of all, thank you, Melissa, for not reading a comment that was submitted by someone who had the gall to do that under the name of someone who was very well-known in the city and died on January first. Whoever did that should take a look at himself or herself in the mirror. I totally support WGI doing the work to give you all the information you need in order to be able to understand what's required for a residential parking plan and for down, paid downtown parking, if that's the desire you want to do. But without data, and we've often heard data, data, data from up here, you're not really dealing with the facts. So I support this item and WGI doing the work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there a present, all right, Ms. Malaga?
I was just gonna ask, are you giving us time certain on this conversation?
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at that. We, there's no, there's no presentation?
No, not from the task order.
Okay.
Because it's a straightforward task.
Three minutes per person, five, what do you?
Let's, let's, Madam Clerk, can you measure three minutes for?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Malaga?
Thank you. So, as somebody who's had a business downtown and had one of the only parking lots, I've said before, I have to fight for my, for my members to be able to use my parking lot and not everybody else downtown. If we're gonna build a garage, and we need a garage, because the reason we have so many vacant storefronts is because there's not enough parking for people. We have to be able to offset that cost, and we're not gonna know what that looks like unless we do this study. In addition to the people who live downtown, who are constantly fighting people parking in front of their homes. You know, we have to figure out a way to protect those people who own homes and who rent homes that are close to downtown and losing their parking spots, because most people who live downtown don't have a garage and don't have a driveway. So I don't think that this is wasted money. I think that we've spent money on a mobility study. We've spent money on a parking study twice, and this is the next right step. It doesn't mean that we're gonna roll out paid parking tomorrow. It doesn't mean that we're, but we have to have a plan. The city's not gonna move forward unless we. It doesn't mean that we're, but we have to have a plan. The city's not gonna move forward unless we start putting the building blocks together for a plan. And to me, every time I go to a city, I have three different parking apps on my phone. It's already, no, I'm gonna pay. But who am I gonna pay? That's always the question. And people expect to pay when they come to a beach. They expect to pay when they go to a restaurant, be it valet parking or curbside. So it's not like we're doing something that everybody else isn't doing. Even Palm Beach is rolling out paid parking. So I think that this is the next step. I, that's why I made the motion to support it. That doesn't mean that I'm, I'm saying let's do it tomorrow, but we need a plan and we need to know what does that plan look like? How far from Lake Incearn do we go? Do we go one block north and south? Do we go two blocks? Does it need to be a citywide? Because I live at Fourth and E and there are sometimes six and seven cars from one house that are parking on the street. So how do we help control the overcrowding? This could be one of those tools since we can't do inspections of properties. This could be a tool, it's in our toolbox to say, all right, each resident, each rental gets three, two decals. If you don't, then we know that you have too many people in that house. So I think this is gonna just give us more tools. Again, when we have this information, we can also go out for more grants and more funding and put a plan together to really move the city forward. So that's why I support this.
Thank you, Mr. McBoy.
Yes. I, I did hear the reference to the need for data and I appreciate the recognition that I am quite a bit of a data fan. And I agree. We do need data. And the data that we need before we spend a hundred thousand dollars on the study as it is scoped out is what is the community enthusiasm for paid parking? I think we already heard some public comments that made it pretty clear. And I think anybody who's been around town for the last while as parking has come up would probably say, well, at least anecdotally, there's not much enthusiasm for paid parking. A hypothesis was put forward that the explanation for why we have so many empty storefronts is because we don't have enough parking. That is a perfectly fine hypothesis that it would be quite useful to get some data on perhaps, but we don't have that data and this study wouldn't give it. The assumption is it's important when you think about numbers and data and make expensive decisions to distinguish between hypotheses and something that you actually know. We do not know what the reason why there are empty storefronts there. There are a lot of contributing factors. And it's unlikely that the lack of parking is it. And why do I say it's unlikely? Because when you look at the last study, it had only two hours on a one or two weekend nights where we actually maxed out on our parking. And everybody knows who's been here for a July fourth event in the past, maybe not so much this past year, but in the past. And for street parking, street painting. Our parking availability is highly elastic. So that does not suggest to me very high likelihood of the hypothesis that our businesses are empty, our storefronts are empty because of lack of parking. A statement was made, we're not gonna move forward without paid parking. Again, that's a statement without evidence. So we haven't gauged community enthusiasm for it. We also, perhaps even more importantly, have not done any sort of a resource economics study of what would be the impact on businesses. We are the only community around that doesn't have paid parking. That is clearly an attractor for people. Do I know quantitatively, does that put us eight points ahead of West Palm Beach? Thirty points ahead, thirty points ahead of Delray? No, I don't know that. But those are discernible information that could be had. We're not doing that. We also haven't done best.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Segred?
So, no.
Mr. Segred?
So, to be clear, for, for, this isn't another study. This is for the creation of a plan. You know, I see in here deliverables for financial plans, enforcement plans, multi zoning plans, residential plans that might help with the density. I would agree with Commissioner Malaga. You know, I live down on Sixth Avenue South and we have issues with parking density that a residential program could benefit greatly. And I've gotten a lot of feedback on that. It's a, it, it can be a plan that is phased in nature. This isn't high, we're going to conduct this, create this plan and on day one, implement paid parking downtown. It's more of a five, maybe seven year plan where there's multiple phases. And depending on where we are at as a city in our maturity and growth of our downtown and our resources and assets, what is the best thing to do during these phases? Now, I don't personally think we should have paid parking downtown until we at least have a parking garage built. And even then, I'm skeptical. But without a plan, we'll never get there. We'll, we'll never actually take action. We'll never actually progress. Some things that I would like to see included in, in the work order. I would like to see us expand the zone, an area that we're looking at, especially for the residential programs. I would like to propose we either follow the circuit boundaries because that's part of our mobility plan and analyze that zone, or at least go six to six for that. I also would like to really stress that an income analysis does need to be conducted. I know we have numbers in our twenty twenty-four plan. We do have numbers in our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four study. We have numbers in our twenty eighteen study and they do conflict. I looked at the charts and maybe we're just comparing apples to oranges. But I think, you know, the gentleman, he brought up a very good point. They conflict and they conflict by a large margin. Or to, to the point where it warrants investigation. So I would like to see staff to come back and shed some clarity behind those numbers so that we can make sure, you know, we're, we're getting the right information there. And then I would also like to add that I believe we need to analyze the areas around our parks as part of this parking plan. I get a lot of resident complaints about overnight parking and nefarious activities going on in front of our public parks, not necessarily in them, in the vehicles that are parked there because PBSO has really been doing a great job of clearing out the parks at night. But there's nothing that they can do about the vehicles there. So I would be very much in favor of moving forward with the additions of experience, expanding the area for residential analysis, stressing a need for an income analysis and reevaluation, not just taking the numbers from twenty twenty-four and expanding to our areas around the parks to also be included in this.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, if you look at the Phase One Task Deliverables, Roman numeral two, it does have under seat paid parking revenue and expense model.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure we relook at the numbers underneath that model. Well, the, the inputs, just, just to validate.
And I, I do like the idea of the circuit boundaries because it does expand into a good area of the city. So I would support.
Mr. Commissioner Segred should say. Okay. What about the parks?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're everything here. Who made the motion to? Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not running it yet. Ms. May?
Okay, so there's the, the line that everything needs to be said, but not everybody needs to say it. So I'm not gonna repeat Ms. Mayor Malaga or Mr. Segred because both are the things that they said I, I agree with. The only other thing that I did wanna bring up is that right now, if somebody told me that I had to pay to go downtown to go to a hookah bar, I wouldn't pay for that. But we're not planning for today. We're planning for the future of Lake Worth Beach and we've got WMota coming. We've got more apartments coming. We've got the Gulfstream coming, which means we're gonna also have a lot more shops and experiences that are gonna wanna come into our downtown. And at that time, we are going to wanna have some sort of a parking management system. Whether it is paid on the streets, paid in the, in the garage, whether it's free in the garage and paid on the streets, who knows? That's, that's why we're doing this. That's why we're hiring WGI to do this. So I don't wanna be caught behind the eight ball on this. But I also wanna think about somebody, a couple of people actually mentioned a pilot program and I, I agree with that. I mean, I think when we get this data back, we're going, we're probably going to have to do some trial and error. You know, oh, that worked, that didn't, that worked, that didn't, because that's what happens when you start something new. You know, I like the part in the task order where it talks about the public outreach and I think that's gonna be really important. I was talking to a resident earlier today and my experience, I mean, I, I, I live on Yale. I have a driveway. I don't park on my street and nobody else does either. So my experience is not the same as somebody who lives on Commissioner Malaga's street. So I think it's really very important that we listen to our constituents and, and because some of them I know that live, live down on Fourteenth are saying we wanna have a residential parking plan that has, you get, say you have a three bedroom house, you have three, you get three decals and if you want anymore, you gotta pay for them. So there's a lot of ideas out there and it's not just gonna be, I mean, if you said, do you wanna pay for parking? Nobody's gonna say yes. So obviously the, you know, but if we go at it as a parking management system that's going to help the residents and make sure that the residents feel that we're protecting this, we're protecting the, right in front of their houses, especially the ones that live closer to downtown. And I do agree, it needs to be, you know, at least six up and six down. So I agree that we need to do this and I think that a lot of ideas will come out of this that wouldn't have come out of it without doing it.
Right. Thanks. Mr. McBoy, how are we doing for time, ma'am? So how are we doing for? Oh, I'm sorry, Jamie, I forgot you.
Oh, Chris, you may actually address some things. I was just gonna mention, you know, even with the hundred and ten additional units, including the artist's ops as part of the product that's gonna be taken place. We're adding a considerable amount of additional residential in the downtown. So we're not just looking at, again, we talk about future planning. We're not just looking at like this weekend.
Right.
And should we have a paid parking right now, this weekend? We're gonna have a considerable amount of additional people, which is going to then theoretically bring more business as well. We can't wait until we're ended and say, okay, now we need to.
We should start thinking about it.
We need to do it now.
Yeah, no, we, and I think this commission is looking for twenty, twenty-five years in the future. We're setting up a legacy rather than just what do we need right now? What does it seem like we need right now?
And that's the situation we've fought in the past in the city where we kind of wait until it's too late and then say, oh, we should have done this years ago. And now we're in a process where we're trying to get in front of the April and continue to do this.
We're being proactive.
Yes, instead of reactive, which we always fall into.
Madam Clerk, how are we for time?
You have seventeen minutes and twenty seconds.
Okay, so could you keep timing it three minutes, Mr. McBoy?
Yeah, um, I, I hear the comments on, we wanna be forward looking. We wanna be thinking twenty-five years out. That strikes me as perhaps a little long, but kudos, great idea that we're thinking forward. We should be factoring into that a number that I got from the consultants that were here when we talked about the P three, they were, I forget, well, I don't remember the name, had an A in it, but they were national level folks that talked about public private partnerships. And they said that the number that is the industry working number for parking is a decline and I've, I, I don't remember now. I think it was like a two percent year decline. It was a noticeable number. That's what the industry is looking at, that parking demand will be going down nationally as people plan. Not up, which might seem counterintuitive. It's not my number. It's number from people who clearly are in the business of big construction projects, city planning kinds of things. And they were in the, you know, the building side of it. So that should be a part of our thinking. Obviously, there's a trend in terms of businesses. There's a trend away from brick and mortar and more to online. I've seen no data that suggests that that is going to reverse. That also ought to be factored into our future planning. I'm concerned that Phase Two, as opposed to Phase One, is public art reach, marketing and branding. That to me sounds like selling an idea. That doesn't sound to me like, hey, let's do some serious information gathering of what does the community want? What is the economic analysis pro and, you know, do a neutral analysis of, is this in fact gonna help the downtown businesses or is it gonna hurt it when you factory and all sorts of things? I would push that analysis inquiry part of it up to the first phase of it. And I would not make it a sales pitch sort of thing. I would make it information gathering. Those would be my suggestions if you wanna move forward on the study.
Thank you. Mr. Segred?
Just really quick, you know, th- this is a, a very hot topic for people. I've gotten a lot of feedback and I, I truly believe as an elected official, we're, we're here to represent our constituents. And it's incumbent on us to do that kind of outreach and not leave that to the consultant. I've been talking to my constituents about this very topic since the day I was elected and since before I was elected, gathering information and I fully intend to do that. And I really think we bear that responsibility because in the end, it's us five making this decision and directing these consultants. I wouldn't want a consultant talking to my constituents for me. You know, that's just how I, I, I feel that we can get that kind of information long before even Phase One on this. The other quick comment and Jamie kind of reminded me with all of the affordable housing that, that we are doing in our city and it's commendable and we're, we're trying to do it. With that comes greater parking density because they are getting parking credits. And so we're pushing more of that parking out to the street. And thinking down the line, you know, I, we already have parking issues in, near my neighborhood. And we have a wonderful new development coming in, probably thirty units right around the corner. And they are going to get all of the parking credits because they are a live local project. And they're right on federal. They're not gonna be parking on federal. They're gonna be parking on the side streets, on Eighteenth, on Sixth, on Eighth, on Tenth. And without a proper plan, you know, as these come in and as we fill in those empty lots, we're gonna be lost. And so for me, you know, this, this isn't just another study. If it was another study, you know me, I wouldn't vote for it. I'm quite vocal about that. You know, this is truly to, to, to create a, a plan. And, you know, about parking demand going down, parking demand is going down in areas where mobility can go up. But if we look at our mobility study, we are very constrained on what we can do. You know, we're not like Boston where we have the T and we have people taking the train around town and everything. We have the circuit where, you know, we have bicycles, but we're very limited. So, you know, but part of this plan is gonna be looking at that, you know, and, and who knows? We might be surprised and realize we don't need as much once we go through this plan and we're able to pack vehicles and so on. But without a plan, we're, we're, we're just, we're, we're just gonna be in the dark, you know, and.
Casting about.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McBoy, one last shot.
I would just, as a member of the Trezegus Planning Council, as a longtime planning interested person who talks to planners a lot as a member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the county. Interestingly, a little bit not to disagree or be difficult, but Lake Worth is known for the exact opposite of what Commissioner Segred just said. We are one of the most alternate transportation friendly communities in South Florida because of our layout. And it's known among planning folks. So the, if I were asked, if somebody asked me to give a professional opinion on that decline in parking demand number, use the national number or bump it up some or bump it down, all the available planning information would say the decline is gonna be even severer here, the demand for it because of the nature of our city. And, and that's, that's not my speculation. That's just, you know, known in the planning world for a long time. So again, I, I'm okay with studies. I'm concerned that we're not really studying the right things. I would feel much better if the first steps were, get some of the information. Talking to constituents, I've been doing the same thing. They're all opposed to. But that's not quantitative. That's anecdotal. Your interaction with your constituents, my interaction with my constituent. You can be quantitative about those sort of things and should be when you're planning things that have a big influence on the city. Also, we should make early into the plan reversible alternatives. I think somebody did mention that QR codes that could be done. If you talk to long-term residents here, they will, some of the, long, long term, you gotta go backwards. I'm told, I was not here then. I'm told that in the eighties, this experiment was done with, at that time, you used parking meters. And if you look hard. And if you look hard enough, you will find sidewalks where they're cut off at the ground because they were moved in a matter of months because it. It was not something that people decided was a net benefit. So try some experiments of reversible cheap things before we move too far and, and collect that off.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second, I believe. Mr. Brown, you have another comment before we go?
I, I did just want to mention, because I've heard a couple of times about like the, the parking meters and installation of all these parking meters and everything. Um, part of our conversations, I know what we're gonna see uh as part of this is. You don't see a lot of those with the exception of like downtown Os Palm where those were, they, they've been there for a long time. As Vice Mayor mentioned before, I have a lot of different parking apps on my phone as well. A lot of people, instead of putting in physical infrastructure these days, you utilize the apps. So we're not looking to invest in physically paying for installing meters all over the downtown. That, that is not, and I've heard that a couple of times. I just wanted to make sure people were clear that that's not part of what we're looking into.
I mean, Congress isn't gonna walk around and take all the quarters out every single day?
You've got a wagon for all the change.
Well, it's funny because yeah, a couple of years ago I was coming out of my office. And there was a couple of parking in the parking lot behind my office and they were like looking around. I said, can I help you? Where, where do we pay? They were like agog that we were not, yeah, we're, and, and yeah, it does make us separate that we don't pay for parking. It's lovely that we don't pay for parking. But what our citizens have to understand is that we need revenue. And this is when we're talking about development, this, we cannot, in a couple of years, we have five percent increases in our four hundred and fifty uh staff members. We have our, you know, your gas goes up for you, it goes up for us. Everything you pay, it pay goes up for us as well. So we need to find some pieces of revenue. And I'm sorry, but that's, nobody wants to pay for it. And, and every time we talk about this, we do talk about residential, uh, you know. Rates for residents, you know, making, paying attention to our residents. Mr. Segridge?
Just a point of information, do we have to amend the motion to include some of the changes we talked about?
Give me just a second, yeah. Um, okay, so we are, we have a motion and a second, but we do have Mr. Segridge's, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I did want to just, just real quick, just to kind of, and you. Brought something else up there, so. We, we hear the comments sometimes about how there, there's a benefit for us not having paid parking. Um, because pretty much every other city you go to that has a downtown entertainment district or something, they all do have it. Um, just as devil's advocate. I would look at that differently and say, well, why are we the ones who doesn't? Because even the town of Palm Beach, who doesn't really have an issue when it comes to budget and revenue. Even they have, it's like, there's a reason towns are doing this because you have, it's, it's, you have to have a management system.
And people said, people won't come downtown, but you also, you can't get a parking space in Delray either, which, you know, you have to pay for parking is.
It doesn't seem to be an issue in other places where there's paid parking. If you have something that will bring people to your downtown, they're going to come to your downtown. And I think that's what we're gonna see as part of this, this study.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. Okay, so.
So amend my motion.
Yeah.
Amend my motion to include. All the areas from six north to six south. From A Street to Federal.
Can't they just look into where it would be appropriate?
Well, that would be the.
Well, Federal, they go, the circuit goes beyond Federal, goes to, you go to Beach, it goes to Lakeside. It doesn't stop at Federal.
How would you want me, Jamie, to look at me like?
Well, I was, before when we were looking at um extending beyond a couple of blocks north of Lucerne and south of Lake. Um, we had looked at six because obviously that's the second quarter coming up, uh, and then Seventh Avenue North because that's where the golf course is. So it seemed like that was kind of a good box. We initially. Weren't going that far mainly because we currently have the same amount of parking staff. So part of the study is going to be looking at what we would have to do if we're going to enforce an area that large. As far as enforcement, because this kind of points to do this, if we don't have the bodies to enforce the entire territory, we're looking at doing for the residential program. So that's why we were looking at something scalable. So we started out with a manageable perimeter. And then we were able to then keep kind of moving further west, further north, further south, sort of the decal program. As long as it's scalable, then we're able to kind of do that systematically as a budget rolls around and the next year's budget, we're looking to expand. Um, and maybe not take such a large bite right off the bat.
Could they give us phases though? Like if we did phase one, phase two.
I think it would be beyond, I think it should be beyond Second Avenue North and South.
A hundred percent, that's what I'm saying. So maybe they could give us information on phasing.
Yes.
To downtown and then phase two being from six south to Seventh or Tenth.
So that's gonna be part of the study. So whether it's three blocks or four blocks north or south, that was gonna be the initial phase based on what, what we get back. Mainly because the whole point is you want to have it far enough where.
Right, make.
Someone's not gonna just park in front of someone's house and just walk to downtown. There, there is a set distance.
So what streets are you suggesting six to seven?
But I'm just saying, so phase one, do you want to be downtown, like two blocks north and south from what I'm, when I.
We initially talked about three blocks north of Lucerne, three blocks south of Lake.
And then phase two pricing would be including going Sixth Avenue South to Seventh Avenue North?
Correct.
And including the, the west side from A Street to.
Correct. Part of this as well would be looking at our city lots, um, like City Hall. I don't know if you guys know, there's some times at night, some of the activities that happen here. Um, the annex property, the CRA, attached properties. So it's gonna be a multi-phased approach. But again, this is a matter of just kind of putting this together and we're gonna be coming back to you guys during this process to get your input and everything in, in public meetings. Um, there is the public uh reaching out to the public as well to get some input. Um, so.
What if we did three, would you do an additional task order for this then? To go to phase two and to extend the search area? So we have to have it in this language now that we want to have three phases outlined for us.
We, we can do it that way. Or again, once we have this and we have the set.
We just come back and do.
All right, like this, like where we going?
Well, because to me, I want this in writing. And the reason I, I want this as part of the agreement is because I don't want to just focus on the downtown and then, God forbid, I'm not sitting here six months from now. Six weeks from now, whatever, that this, it doesn't continue to move because it's about protecting the residents as well.
Correct. So the whole point with it being scalable is once we have this whole system in place, we're able to then move this. Because all you're doing is just shifting the boundaries.
But I, I still want to see the language in.
Okay.
In the task order, that it's phase one, phase two or phase three, however you want to do it. Or they look at the whole collective area at one time.
Okay.
That's, that's important.
Be, I'm sorry, phase one is gonna be bigger than second to second.
Yeah, but don't use the word phases because we already have phases in here. Okay, task order one, two, three.
No, like location one, location two.
Mr. Segridge, roll out one, two and three.
I don't think it needs to be a separate task order and, and the phase, phases are, you know, at what point in time are we gonna do which areas and, and so on? But I, I think it's too important for the residents now that are struggling with, with some of the stuff. We, we need to tackle the larger area and I think we need to tackle the parks question. It doesn't mean that we're going to implement the parking in there right away or not. And I also think a lot of the residents are, are looking at this and, and fearing that all this is, is an approval to do paid parking downtown. And it's not. It's, it's to look at the problem, come up with a plan, and that plan might not include paid parking downtown. It might include it five years from now. And so I think in this task order, we look at the entire scope of area. And then we can come up with which do we have, want to act on first. I happen to think some of the residential problems might be easy wins to, to act on where the residents will actually really appreciate the benefit. So I would, I would like.
So that, that's what I'm asking, do I, Christine? How, how, how do we amend the approval to add that language in here? Because when you look at the language right now, it says downtown paid parking district and residential parking boundaries. And it has the boundaries of.
Second to second.
Railroad tracks on the west side to Gulfview, on the east side, from second north to second south on the south side. That's, that's too small, but I would like to look at this holistically as, as we were just saying, the downed. Obviously not College Park because they don't really have that issue. But yeah, you may one day. How do you advise, sir, that we add the language and change the, how do you advise amendments? Old wives want to tell me.
Would you like to, as you're saying, Seventh Avenue North to Sixth Avenue South? And then I would say all the way to Bryant Park and then to A Street, the traffic circle.
Yeah.
That's a large area.
Yep.
And it's gonna increase the price of this study.
I, I would think that we can't just say, hey, we want more, but the price has already been agreed on. I think the consultant, they push back.
Well, that's, of course.
Well, we could amend it and approve it as that. And then if there's a, a, a met, a, a budget amendment, then we can talk about that later.
Yeah.
Agree?
Agreed.
So start with.
Okay, so I amend my approval to include the language, changing the boundaries under phase one, letter I. Letter A, instead of downtown paid parking, to change it from Sixth Avenue South to Seventh Avenue North. South A Street to Bryant Park.
So, A Street, just A.
A Street, yes.
At Lake and Lucerne.
Yes. Including Bryant Park and, and the park areas.
Well, is that gonna affect the price?
Well, it's going to, but it's, I'm saying, we're, we're gonna prove it as this. And then if, when Jamie talks to WGI, they can come back and let us know if there's gonna be a budget amendment that we have to do for this task order.
If we decide we want to pay more money for it.
Correct.
That'd be, that would be a separate approval.
Just keep in mind, a lot of the tasks in here, they're not gonna change.
Right.
We're just spreading boundaries. So we'll have that conversation with them and see if there's going to be an increase. And if so, what that would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion that has been amended. Has the amendment been seconded?
No.
Okay. I can second the amendment. Okay, great. So.
That would be may.
Thank you. That's a good idea. That's a very good idea. Um, I think we're done with discussion. So um. All in favor of the amendment as it was stated of its approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay?
I would be a nay because it seems still ill-defined what exactly we're doing.
Okay, thank you. So that's four yays and one nay. Um, okay. Up next is.
Carl, so you sure you don't want quarters? Because we can make that happen. I mean, it does say parking meter in here, to be honest.
Take up a point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone. Ordinance twenty-five dash oh five, first reading, please read by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance number twenty-two five. Dash oh five, an ordinance of the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending the city's official zoning map. From the zoning district of mixed-use East MU dash E to downtown DT on the properties generally located at the west side of South K Street. And north of First Avenue South. At Thirteenth South K Street, Nineteenth South K Street, Twenty-five South K Street, Seven Oh Four. First Avenue South and Seven Ten First Avenue South, and as more particularly described in Exhibit A, and provided for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve? Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Um, madam, uh, are there any public comments on this? I was replying. Thank you. Alex Schultz.
Thank you. Alex Schultz, six twelve Second Avenue South. On, on the fireworks, I did hear some grunts, but when they went off, a lot of people just kept saying, oh, they delayed the works until Lantana fi- finished Thursday. And so everybody was fine with the tech. Uh, basically, I, I have a few comments. And when, when you're looking at amending things and looking at mixed use and stuff like that. One of the things I've noticed, if parking's involved, if you say, for example, if you look at the Bohemian, you got about thirty-five cars out there at night parking on the street from the Bohemian. So when you approve the Bohemian, you didn't have, really prove enough requirement for them to have parking spaces for their people. Just take a look tonight, drive past the Bohemian, see how many of their residents are parking outside on the street. And the same thing, there's like, you probably needed another fifteen to twenty at the Lucerne downtown. If you, I, I used to occasionally go up by the mid and I, I won't even park on the street up there anymore to, for, to visit a business. Because there are so many cars now parked on the street from the mid. So that's really one, you want to think about making sure. Uh, any residential units have enough onsite parking because you're just cramming that onto the street. And another thing, requiring retail space in some of these mixed-use units. If you look at the Bohemian, that retail space has been empty there ever since it opened. The mid has some empty retail spaces, empty retail space in Lucerne. If you go to affiliated six thirteen down in Fort Lauderdale, the six thirteen project, that retail's all empty. So I don't know if you want to be putting more retail space in. And one of the reasons I hear about complaints from people downtown that have moved their businesses, the rent just got too high. You had people buy up all these properties and just jack up the rent and that's. And that's just caused the problem. People just can't afford it to rent here. So there's a lot of things to consider. You don't want to be pushing up the price of rental units and. That's one of the biggest things, just the rent. Oh, and on the way here this evening, the K Street parking surface lot is like less than half full. And that's one thing you'll notice in the off-season, you, uh, a lot of these.
Sorry, that's time.
Thank you. Todd Townsend.
Hi, Todd Townsend, five oh two South J Street. I just wanted to reiterate yet again. That that space on South K and First Ave should be a park, a pocket park. And there should be no building in there. We should be pulling out stuff and planting uh. Native plants and trees and stuff like that. Maybe some iron, some wrought iron seating, a water feature in the middle. Something like that. And no parking in there and no building in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have public comments on this issue item?
I have two. Uh. Panagioti Tsolakis, eight twenty-two North C Street. I'm a home owner, homeowner and resident of the city and a member of the group Lake Worth for All. Regarding the plans for the city-initiated zoning map amendment, requesting a rezoning, I ask that you put this ordinance on the ballot. As it pertains to public land subject to referendum under the city's charter. This has been laid out on public record by the city attorney Christie Gudoe, who stated that under the inter-local agreements with the CRA. Three of these parcels must revert to city ownership prior to their sale. Specifically, she wrote in a staff memo dated March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The inter-local agreements all contain similar provisions that at the end of the party's obligations. Or if in the event there was a failure to achieve the obligations, the CRA would transfer the parcels purchased with the city's surtax funds back to the city. We need our commissioners to stop accom- accommodating this bad plan. We need you to stand up to this, stand up for us, continuing to pursue this rezoning. In tandem to Womota has a negative impact on me, my family and my fellow members of Lake Worth for All. It erodes our quality of life, worsens traffic, hurts downtown businesses. And the local, local economy increases the strain on regional water quality quantity. Decreases tree canopy, hurts urban biodiversity and is a massive waste of local, county and state taxes. Intended to improve public infrastructure. The only way to make sense of this rezoning plan is to look closely at the influence of the Womota developer, Arthur Weiner, who is standing to make millions. Of this public land giveaway. He is pushing this on us and using his influence over our commission, CRA and city staff to get his way. The second and last comment is from Thomas Convoy, thirty South M Street. The city is better than this. We value our amenities and public land owned by our city. Don't give it away and don't sell it for pennies on the dollar.
Thank you. Okay, a couple of lights on, Mr. McBoy. And let's stick to the three minutes, Ms. Clerk.
Um, couple of questions for somebody. Uh, if we were not doing the Womota project, would we need to be moving these historic buildings?
Amy Greening, principal planner for the city of Lake Worth Beach. A relocation of the structures at Seventeenth South M Street has been contemplated since before I even worked for the city. Um, I believe it was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen when relocation or demolition of. That those structures and a number of other structures went to the HRPB. So this is not, um. This has not come about just because of Womota. This has been contemplated for a while.
But my question is different. It wasn't whether it's been contemplated, um, lots of things get complicated, com- completed in the city. If we were not doing Womota, would we need to be relocating these buildings? I think the answer is.
So relocating these buildings in the imminent future, yes, is tied to the Womota development, which would be where. Be where Seventeenth South M Street is right now.
Okay, uh, some follow up questions. Do we not have a historic downtown district? And is it not a stated objective of that downtown historic district? That we preserve the historic fabric to the extent possible?
We do. We have, uh. These structures are in the Old Town Historic District. Relocation is an accepted part of historic preservation. Um, and so we have in our historic preservation ordinance. Criteria and guidelines for relocation of historic structures in the city. And that will be assessed by the H R P V as a certificate of appropriateness.
Um, that addresses somewhat. The focus on individual buildings, and you can argue that, well, you can move them around like. Chess pieces and still have some historic something, but. My understanding of historic preservation is somewhat. It's a combination of the individual buildings and the historic fabric, that the arrangement. So if you move them all out to the south fairgrounds. Yeah, you still got them, but. We're not contemplating that here, but I think there is an argument that there is a degree of historic loss by moving them. And I think we want to be clear that that is happening because we are considering. The W Motor project, which is not particularly historic. Um. But another question that I had sent to William a couple of days ago, but not knowing that he was out of town. Um. So I guess I'll ask it to you, uh, the two of you. Could these historic structures be moved without making the zoning change?
These structures could be moved. The feasibility of developing the sites as proposed with the historic structure relocation and potential new garage. Would not be feasible under the mixed use east zoning. We really need the additional incentives that come with the downtown zoning district. To be able to do what. You all have, you know, asked us to provide for. The new garage design, which obviously we'll get into later tonight.
So I think what I'm hearing is. That we need to be aware as a governing body for the city. That. And somebody can correct me if I'm misstating, but I believe what I'm hearing is that we could move these historic buildings without doing the zoning change. But the benefits that the developer for W Motor and all of the associated plan unit development bits and pieces. Need this zoning change.
That is not correct. This is not part of the.
Clarify what is correct.
This is not part of the Womota Plan Development. So no incentives of. This development, rezoning it to downtown, they will not be related to any incentives that are. The Womota Plan Development incentives. Those do not cross over between these properties.
So who are these?
Part of that plan development.
Just, just to interject, Lance Lilly with Chip Warner, Associate Senior Planner. The purpose of this is to relocate the existing. Facilities that are at the for leisure services as well as the other historic buildings that's there. However, it also allows for the parking garage. Parking garage that you guys want to have at this particular location. Um, so these are city initiated rezoning, and it's because the city property. Wants to put that parking garage there. The existing zoning that's there does not contemplate a parking structure. So you need to do the rezoning to allow for said parking structure. It's not because of Womota, it's because more so of the parking structure that the city wants to do. And also relocate the historic buildings that are currently there.
Thank you for that clarification. There certainly is. A, a, could I finish up? I, I think there is definitely a. Under. I think there's definitely.
Ms. McBoy, Madam Clerk, how are we for time? With for each speaker, for Mr. McBoy, I'm really trying to keep it.
So I'm only timing when he's speaking. I'm not timing when staff speaks. He has forty four seconds left.
Okay, thank you.
So I think, thank you. Um, I think there's clearly an understanding among a lot of people who are thinking and pay attention, paying attention to this project. That although the city staff has frequently asserted that the garage has nothing to do with W Motor. Uh, that is not something that many people who've been following this believe, because W Motor has very little onsite parking. They need to get their permission. They need parking elsewhere. And so the two are very much connected. In fact, W Motor, the parking garage and the parking downtown are all very intertwined, even though technically they might not be. In practice, there's a good deal of connection.
Thank you.
And we should be aware of that as we.
Ms. Well, like, uh, no, Ms. May, I think. You go ahead. No, I don't want to tell you that right now. Mr. Segridge.
Okay, all right, then I'll go. Um, because he's in the middle of chewing.
All you'd like to do.
So. Hi. Thank you both for being here. I know this is a touchy subject with with some residents. And it is important that residents and business owners and people listening understand. That the only reason that W Motor is involved in any way is because it's, it's a, it's a means to the end of needing a garage at a much cheaper rate. On the interest rate, and I'm sure Yannick, he was here, I don't know if he left. Um. That's the reason that we're taking advantage of this now. Again, we talked about planning for the future of the city. And we need, we need a parking garage. Um. So that's how W Motor got is part of this, is it was, you know, part of staff came and said, well, wait a minute, if they're going to do this project. We need a garage, maybe we can facilitate getting the garage at a less cost, at a better rate and better timing. And I understand that. Now, do not shoot me, Annie, but. I'm one of the proponents who's been up here and saying, yes, we need to keep these buildings. Yes, we need to keep these buildings, but. The next conversation that we're going to be having about the garage. Makes me wonder how fiscally responsible I'm being by moving those buildings and renovating them. And. I just want to be clear that this rezoning. Is for both moving the houses and the garage. So even if we didn't move the houses, we need to do the zoning change. Correct? You're both shaking your head. Yes, thank you.
That's correct.
Um. A question, I don't know if Christine or somebody knows, has anybody filed affected party? I saw that the notices were sent out. Did we get any affected parties in May?
I did not receive.
Okay, so that means that tells me that this, we've done our work. We've got no effective parties. I don't see a, a, a mass full of people in here. When sunset came before planning and zoning. We reached capacity in this building. So I know that when this community has a voice, they're here to let us know. The parking garage is not something that a lot of people are against. I think a lot of people are supporting that we need it for the growth in the downtown. I think this is a smart fiscal way to get there. I support this. Although I do want to have another conversation about the L and M houses when we get to the next part of the conversation. Um, but I do support this. That's why I second it. And thank you for the clarification on the rezoning for being the garage and moving the houses at the same time.
Thank you. I just want to make one comment to any development that would come on the L and M project would need a parking garage, because anything's going to take up this, that parking lot, correct? Doesn't matter if it's Womota or some other.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, who's in, Ms. May?
We spent sales tax for to build parking.
Right. Just for. Anyone listening and maybe for me. So we're switching this from M U to D T. Can you explain exactly what that means?
Good question.
Sure, um, and I'll, I'll let Lynn jump into as he, as he wants.
Right.
Um. The, the short version is we're changing from one type of a mixed use zoning district to another. The downtown zoning district, not really relevant here, because we're not doing residential. But it is more dense in general. So it has greater residential density. It offers greater. Uh, impermeable surface coverage, lot coverage, F A R. It's more dense in general, because it's. Built to be concentrated to our direct downtown.
Of having increased, increased setbacks?
Uh, the setbacks, I believe, are largely the same between the two of them. Um, it may have a difference between a side or rear setback. I'll just hammer call off the top of my head.
Okay. And if we did not move the houses. I asked, I know I've asked you this question, but not in public, besides on the pre agenda meeting. If we did not move the two houses, we would still need to do this switch.
We would still be looking to do this switch.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say one more thing. As part of this rezoning, we need to make sure it's compatible use or compatible rezoning. If you look at the zoning map currently, the uses that are adjacent to it are already downtown. So this is still a compatible rezoning. Not changing the comprehensive plan by any means or comprehensive plan map. It's strictly just amending it from. One mixed use category to essentially another.
So you're just making it all pink, no red?
We're making it.
We can pull up visuals if you.
Yeah, we're making it all downtown, which is pink, and the mixed use was red.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Segridge.
I just have one quick question. What's the maximum height restriction for that new zoning? How many stories?
It depends on whether or not a planned development is proposed and whether or not. Sustainable bonus. So the base, just like everywhere else in the city, is thirty feet, two stories by right. Uh, the sustainable bonus, uh, without plan development incentives, I believe, is. Four stories, if I correctly answered that up right. Um, and then with, uh, plan developments under our comprehensive plan, they're allowed to maximize their height. Uh, to the comprehensive plan maximums, which I would have to look up to confirm, but it would be. Usually, I mean, nowhere in the city in our comp plan is more than six.
And so where, where does the garage fall into that?
So the garage part of that is going to be your discussion tonight. Um, it's. Currently being proposed at four or five. So. Um, a garage would likely be a planned development, um. And would have to use sustainable bonus incentives for height.
What sustainable bonus incentives would be available for garage? Usually it's like affordable housing or. Well.
So our code, um, lays out a wide variety of things that can. Qualify, um, for sustainable bonus incentives.
So for example, it can be a lead certified building, um, or one of those type of buildings that can be green globes. Um, incorporation of historic building or structure. Um, high quality open space landscaping, things like that, or it even actually says public parking garage. So that's in the sustainable bonus.
How fortunate.
Okay, some grass on top.
All right, so, um, we have a motion in a second.
Um. Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, since this is just a rezoning alone, it is technically quasi judicial. So for the record, we just need to make sure that there's no expertise communications. Technically, the city is both the applicant, uh, along with. City staff representing the applicant. So it's a little awkward, but just for the record, uh, if there's any expertise communications with staff. About this issue outside of today's hearing. We need to disclose those.
Okay. District one.
Does that include Jamie?
Yes, that would include Jamie.
Yes, I've had conversations with Jamie and Troy in regards to this item.
Mr. Two.
Can't remember whether Jamie and Troy and I talked about this one. Um, I did send an email to William, but I haven't heard back because he wasn't here. I don't believe I've had any others, but.
I may have had a brief conversation with Jamie, but nothing in depth, but wouldn't. Deny it if I, you said I did. I talked to Jamie during my one on one, and I brought up the question at the pre agenda meeting.
I've talked to Jamie and Troy as well as talked to the C R A.
Okay, and then I believe we do need to put staff under oath in order to provide their testimony, which could be just incorporation of the presentation for purposes of establishing a record. For the.
Would you like to take a note? You want to do it? I mean, you.
You can.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Do you swear that everything you said was the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Um, all in favor, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
All right, that'd be a nay.
That'd be a nay from Mr. McBoy. Okay. Uh. Item number, what was H? I don't know if it's changed numbers or.
I now, Madam Mayor.
I, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion?
Which is for the elegant.
Elegant distinction.
I'm all for the elegant distinction.
Elegant distinction.
It's supposed to be a nice roof, too. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh, second by.
Second.
Mr. Segridge, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Were there any public comments about this? I don't think. Can we go to the?
No, Madam Mayor.
Our parking structure? Yes, we can. Thank you. So now. So the next one, the next thing we have up is our last. Agenda item, which is.
Parking garage.
The parking garage unfinished business. Okay.
Used to be unfinished.
Right now it's something else.
Right, exactly.
We can take.
It's still unfinished business theme, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we're going to take a comfort break and we will.
Anyway.
Feedbacks. No. I'm just like obsessing about his puppy.
I know, they're so.
Oh, my God. Is the dark one the runt?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me see.
Oh, my God. I'm not so strong.
Again, really.
Are they, were they girls, boys? What are they?
I didn't.
I always wait to.
One girl.
One girl.
Three boys.
Which?
This one's red. This one's a girl.
The runt is the girl? Oh, good.
She's gonna look like her mother.
So she's Scarlet Sky. The white one is Atlas.
Atlas?
And the two um Goldens. Dozer. And Gage.
Gage. Now you're selling them, right?
Probably gonna keep two.
I like the little girl. We might be getting a dog. Um, which I didn't anticipate. My sister's up in Chicago.
Yeah.
And she's helping this family that we know, like packed to move. And they have a poodle. Nice poodle. And apparently he ran away, got put animal care control and now he's all freaked out. The house is chaos. There's three kids. They're moving. So my sister says, will you take this poodle? I'm like, well, we'll try it. And will you take it if it doesn't work out for us? Okay, so she's bringing a orthodox Jewish poodle. I said this eco. He wears a yarmulke, has a little thing. So.
Oh, gotcha.
I don't want to do this.
You have what?
Oh, I love Fignons.
What are adult Fignons?
They have them at uh BJ's. They have them at in the big boxes. They are. They have blueberry and raspberry ones at BJ's.
I love Fignons. My Fignons and Lorna Doones.
Madam Mayor.
What?
It is nine oh one. Um, I have a question. Since I see the presentations up, are we gonna do the presentation? And then have public comment? Or are we gonna have public comment and then have the presentation?
Well, we don't have a motion yet. So we're gonna start with that. We don't have a motion.
After, after that. After the motion.
After the motion. There's no motion for this? Is this just a discussion?
Yes, no, there's a motion. To approve the design report.
There is.
Thank you, Will.
Yes, um, so on the staff report. There is a motion on there.
Right.
Disregard.
Okay.
What this is going to do, this we're presenting everything tonight to give you guys all the information. This will be coming back on August nineteenth.
Okay.
In which you guys will be uh.
No, you won't.
And which you guys will be making a uh decision on August nineteenth. So um next week is the FME, FMEA comp.
Uh huh.
Um, that I think three of you are going to. So we can do it next week. So the week of the twenty eighth, I had mentioned that on the twenty eighth, twenty ninth and thirtieth in your one-on-ones, we will have uh staff president, like Brett will be there, Joan, um William, to go over any questions you guys might have from tonight. That gives you guys a full month to talk with your constituents, um get some public input and we come back on the nineteenth. So apologies, but yeah, that uh there is no motion.
We're just listening. So it's a, it's a show and tell. Okay, we like that.
So we presented by our.
I think we should have a presentation.
Yes, by our owner's rep. So let me introduce uh Brett Whitfield. He is our owner's rep for this whole process.
Never saw him before. I don't trust him.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Brent Whitfield, one three three Duke Drive, commonly known as Mr. Erica Whitfield. For most of my life, actually, uh less, last twenty years while I've lived in the city. Uh, I'm also joined by Bruno Phillips with PGA L. Uh, I'm not an architect. Uh, I think a lot of the questions that may come up are gonna be with respect to the architecture. Uh, Bruno, a very talented expert and well, as we dive into things, I think some questions might come up and I'm gonna be leaning on Bruno a little bit to answer this. So we can go ahead and jump in. We're good? Okay, so um, I wanted to start with a little background. So this is basically the last slide of the last time I presented to everyone uh with a, an additional bullet added. So at the um last time, we talked about the overall parking studies, parking program, a- and then uh reached a agreement with a developer uh to go forward with the South K Street Garage. Uh, the discussion was uh that a paid parking program uh would help manage inventory, uh promote land, efficient land use and generate revenue. That was obviously a discussion item tonight, looking at going forward with that. And the other item that uh came as the recommendation of those studies was looking at opportunities to increase inventory. Uh, and the reason for that was looking at some of the the data that they had collected in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-four. And then also looking at the potential demand that's expected if occupancy is increased and development increases in the downtown. And so that recommendation in the report was to look at a parking garage at South K Street. Uh, on April third, the commission approved a comprehensive agreement uh for the South K Street Garage, which led to um this timeline. So this timeline comes from the parking agreement uh which was entered into in April. And at that point, uh the Sunshine Lake Worth Development uh Incorporated basically started the process of designing. So the initial design report was delivered to the city at the end of June. And tonight is when I'm gonna present that report to you. You've seen the report in your backup, but we'll get into some more detail and discussion. Uh, as Jamie said, we'll then go to a August nineteenth meeting uh where we'll have approval or direction from the commission to the design team. And then the design team will move forward with preliminary design. On the right-hand side, uh there are design fees shown. So I think very thoughtfully, uh the attorney, Ms. Godot, uh recommended that we spell out what portions of the soft costs occur at what portions of the of the schedule. So at this point, we've spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar potential soft costs. And we spent that on a survey, uh the tree survey, the geotechnical data, um the um other field work. Uh, it reports from mechanical electrical plumbing engineer, reports from civil engineer and uh in some respects, most importantly, a design from a, an architect. Uh, so that's where we are in the soft cost phase. That's where we are in the design phase. If you'll see, there's a lot of things that still remain. So there'll be a preliminary design based on your direction, how you want us to go come August nineteenth. Uh, the design team will start working on that preliminary design, which will be completed in November of this year. That's another two hundred and fifty thousand of the soft costs, at which point uh the preliminary design will be presented to through the city review process. Uh, does go to the HRPB and for commission consideration uh in the spring of next year. And as things are working along with all of those presentations and reviews, we get to a set of construction documents that can go through permitting in May of next year. So you'll be seeing uh the November deliverable, there'll be a city review of that design. Uh, there'll be the entitlement process and then there'll be the construction documents that go to permitting. After permitting, uh there is basically the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price, where we get a contractor actually commit to we'll build it for this dollar amount. And that seventy-five thousand dollar item I put in there at the GMP, um, uh, uh, city attorney, Ms. Godot, said we have the right to make the soft cost design up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If there is a need, some kind of uh design change that's beyond the scope of the plan, uh uh, you know, as we work through it, uh, the city manager and the city can approve that additional seventy-five. But if things work according to plan, then the soft cost would be six seventy-five and that contingency would stay uh in the city's pocket. So assuming the GMP that comes to you in July uh makes sense and we can all come to some agreement, uh it needs to be approved by September and then they start construction. Uh, so if you see, I wanted to share this timeline because it feels like things might be moving fast and you haven't seen everything. Potentially, that's not true. Uh, it's just we haven't had much to share. And now we have something to share. So here we are to share it. And uh, we have a lot more steps along the way where there's an entitlement process, a permit process, another review process. In fact, again, we're just in a discussion tonight. And there'll be some decisions made a month from now after discussions with constituents and one-on-one meetings. So I want to just kind of give that timeline to give some context of where we are in the overall process.
Question.
Of course.
Mayor. Um, the guaranteed maximum price proposal of two seventy-five, just explain what that is.
So at that point, uh, we'll come to the city, assuming we make it to this point and we have a plan, we'll have a contractor that's saying we're gonna build the garage you see on this paper for eight point three two million as we've put the price together. So the team will be checking the actual garage design, fully structural design and all the different engineering elements, landscape, whatever, to a contractor and get an agreed price. And so if you approve that in September, then you know you have um a contract price to build the garage. So that's the point where uh all the numbers that you see right now are projected construction costs based on cost estimators looking at our concept and coming up with how much they think it'll cost to build. You know, the four-four gla- garage, how much the exterior improvements cost, how much the elevator costs, what have you. At that point, it's not just an estimator projecting, it's a contractor saying, if you sign this contract, I'm gonna build it for that price. So that's what the GMP is, the guaranteed maximum price. This is the number I will construct it for. So that, that's the point of having that.
Putting that proposal together is the.
Gives, gives the assurance. So that's basically the final soft cost payment. So we've, we would have been paying them at these steps, a hundred and fifty thousand to do the initial design, an additional two hundred and fifty to have a full set of, you know, preliminary design documents with structural engineering and all those pieces. And then the last two seventy-five is, hey, this is a biddable set of plans that a contractor has agreed to give a commitment on.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And just for context, which, you know, we're gonna have a wide-ranging discussion, I'm sure, um seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar soft cost on a eight and a half million dollar garage is not an unreasonable amount. It's less than ten percent. I think that's in the range of industry. And it is in the agreement. These aren't like new numbers to us. They are uh what was in the agreement, so.
Uh, Ms. Milligan? It's gonna take? Yeah. Thirteen months to build a garage?
From November to December, you're saying, a twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah, that, that's a year and a month.
So that's what's in the schedule as of right now.
But does it really take that long? I mean, it's cement for crying out loud.
It, it's, it's a precast structure. And I would say.
So it's like Lego, Lego.
It is. It is. They'll get prefabricated off-site and brought in on.
So that should take like three weeks?
It, it seems like it'll go up, it'll start looking like it's going up really quick and then it starts to slow down as you start putting fire protection in there, the. The utilities, all that kind of stuff in it. All of a sudden you see it erected and then so when we're gonna be able to drive into it. Uh, but I would, I would say just to be conservative, twelve months is probably good. But you could probably occupy the garage earlier than with the TCO. It's like that, maybe it's ten months when it's all sudden.
I just didn't think of it. It seems like, it does seem like a long.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Like we build them every day, like we know what we're talking about.
My expertise as a garage builder. Well, let's, let's talk to people and fit that before.
We can do that. Uh, so I wanted to also give some context to the number of spaces. So uh, if you look at this kind of rudimentary map here of the kind of downtown area from J to M, uh, you look at uh current spaces that would be, these are surface lot, off-street parking inventory that would be impacted uh in the case the K Street Garage is constructed, in the case the Womota uh property is developed. So there's fifty-six spaces in the K Street surface lot. Um, you may hear, some people could count up to fifty-eight, but two of those spots have a dumpster sitting in them. Uh, so you know, those aren't parkable spaces. Uh, the sixty-three spaces, as you know, is kind of behind the old uh um chamber building and, and all that surface lot spaces. So those two are current inventory uh that comes out to, you know, a hundred and nineteen spaces that is currently in that downtown area that would be impacted. Then you look at uh Womota. So the Womota development uh as part of their uh arrangement is in this parking agreement has committed to pay for fifty spaces in lieu of uh creating those spaces as part of their museum. And so uh from what I heard in uh the latest update from William, as they go through their site plan, it looks like they're actually gonna require forty-five by code. But the fifty spaces is in the agreement, that's the commitment, that's what they're paying for, that's a million dollars that they've committed to go towards the garage. So um, and yeah, I know Jamie. And yeah, I know Jamie had done some negotiation in the agreement as to how long those 50 spaces are committed. But I think the kind of reason I mentioned the 50 spaces is when we're trying to imagine the inventory you need for the garage, you've got the 119 that's actually there and the 50 that Womota has said that they'll need for the museum. And then there's some more spaces, but I know we have a light. I don't know if I need to answer a question yet or finish the slide.
That's okay. Okay, Mr. Ruvoi.
Those 50 spaces for W Motor, those are not onsite at the museum. Where are they?
So Womota is developing a museum that has square footage of, you know, I guess, museum space that attracts people to come.
33,000 square feet.
Right. And so the folks that are going to come there theoretically may come there with a car. And so the city has calculated that by code, that square footage and that use would require 45 parking spaces to be constructed. Now, the city has the option to tell the person that's building that, they can pay for those spaces into a parking fund that the city can use and not have to provide them. And that's the option that the city is going forward with, I believe, as I describe it when you say the in lieu of. So you see it a lot of places in other cities. You were talking earlier about kind of newer urbanism, not needing as many parking spaces. Some cities are saying, hey, you don't have to build those parking spaces that are required in our code. You can pay us money. And we, and you don't provide them and then we'll find a way to provide them or not provide them and just let that be. And so in this case, they're paying for 50 spaces because they have 45 that are identified in the city code that are potential demand. And giving the million dollars to the city to say, okay, we have paid the, the money required to equalize our demand for parking. And now the city can decide if it wants to build 50 more spaces or pocket the million dollars and, and move from there. The agreement was, the parking agreement, comprehensive parking agreement was, let's take that million dollars and go forward with a parking garage. Cause now we have a million dollars that we didn't have before that we can put into a parking garage and create inventory with it. And so that's the point in the process.
And this is where it gets a little murky for the public. Can I finish? Are there, does that mean that the parking garage will have 50 dedicated spaces that are only available for the museum? And I believe the answer is no. So we are, we recognize that the museum is going to create a parking demand. If you go by the institutional requirements of our code for 33,000 square feet, the parking requirement is something like 240 spaces. So the 50, yeah, calculate it out. It's, it's much, if you assume what the October 2024 document said, that we are going to give you a 33, I can't remember if it was 30 or 33, 33 sticks in my head, thousand square feet museum. That's an institution in our code and that you can calculate what the requirements are. It's something like 240.
I, I can't speak to it at all. I'm not an expert on the code, but William is. And he told me that by code it's 45 required and that's all I know. And, and I think if William was here, he could answer it more adeptly, but I added that parenthetical based on his.
I understand that and I'm not to give you a hard time, but it is interesting that we are moving forward with these ethereal spaces. Maybe the number is the right number, maybe the number is not, maybe the number is realistic regardless of what our code says, and maybe it's not. But it does, they don't exist anywhere. They are not going to be dedicated spaces in this parking garage because we've said, no, we're not going to do that. They're available to the public, but they're also available to W Motor. So I think we're going to stack them double.
One thing that's nice about the concept of the W Motor development with respect to the museum is that the 50 spaces that they say, or that the city says that they need to create or pay for are spaces that are more than likely going to be used during the daytime, which isn't always the peak hour that you see in our downtown with respect to our restaurants and, and nightlife. And so there could be a benefit there where the 50 spaces that are not dedicated to Womota in the garage, if it was to move forward, are used during the day and then vacant at night where they can be used by people that are going to Lilo's or Dave's or, or whatever Brokes is called, not Irish Brigade. Irish Brigade.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, Mr. Segridge.
So the, um, the payment in lieu of spaces is not something that's unique and special to the W Motor project, correct?
Correct.
So if I was going to bring in a new restaurant downtown, do a complete gut rehab, overhaul it and so on, and I didn't have any parking, I'd be required to pay into this fund the same as they did.
So yeah, I think as part of the, the permitting process of developing your site with the city, the city would say, well, according to our code, you're required to have X number of spaces. If you can't find a way to provide those, you can buy those spaces out of our fund at $20,000 a space.
So nothing special, standard routine and it lets us do with it as we wish.
Correct.
Great.
Keep going.
Okay. So the last thing, which if you want to talk about ethereal spaces, I think this is an interesting concept here. So the city purchased the land in that L and M area with a portion of the land with sales tax money. And the sales tax purchase was worded as such, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie or Christie, was worded as such that it was being acquired for the intent of creating a parking inventory or downtown parking. And so the commitment for that purchase was 36 spaces, which don't currently exist. But the city is obligated to provide at some point as, you know, tied to the money that was spent to purchase that land. So the reason I bring all this up is because, oh, and here's an explanation, a little bit of it, because the spots in yellow, which, you know, were shown on this map here are basically, that's how the 36 spots are. There was also land that was purchased by the CRA for future redevelopment. Generally, the property has always talked about redevelopment focus and then including an accommodation of public parking. So it's just important to kind of point all that out because I made this table so we could try to have an idea of spots, right? So there's 119 spots that you can currently park your car in that will disappear if the Womota development and the K Street Garage are constructed. There is 36 spots that the city is obligated to provide if you build something on that property that is purchased between L and M somewhere. And then you have the 50 spots that Womota is paying the city to either create or just use on some other purpose, but is demand identified as kind of the code calculations. So there's 205 spaces theoretically that the city either is taking out of service, is obligated to construct, or is taking money in lieu of providing as part of the demand. So I think when you think about how many spots the garage should have, and it's a really important question. I think if you went below 205, you would be either not providing what's there, not providing what you're obligated to provide, or not providing the demand that someone paid you for. And those are all decisions to be made, but in context.
I was just.
Well, Mr. Ruvoi, will you finish with that particular?
With this slide.
Okay, with that slide, Mr. Ruvoi.
Yes, the, I'm reading from the inter-local agreement. The CRA understands and agrees that the transferred funds must be strictly utilized as set forth within herein, including the continued public use of the surface parking area. That's the language that's in the inter-local agreement. I have a feeling that part of the plan is to dissolve those inter-local agreements, but it remains that there is some confusion. Oh, sorry, that there's some murkiness, let's say, what funds were, came from the penny sales tax, what restrictions were put on those, who bought them, who sold them? It's, it's, there's some interesting things in there because the penny sales tax had definite restrictions on it. The international agreement had, you know, I'm not making it up. It says strictly utilized as public surface parking. I, I'm not the lawyer, so I can't sort all that out, but it does give me some pause.
Admittedly, I've never understood this until the last few weeks when I was trying to figure it out, and which is why I made this myself for myself, which is.
Can you show us? I've been trying to do that, trying to get the staff to give me those numbers too for a long time.
So, so what I understand is the CRA acquired some of the land in purple with their own funds and the CRA acquired the land in yellow with penny sales tax funds. And the penny sales tax funds, because that was part of the agreement, has a restriction. The land in purple, even though it's shown there with potential parking, does not have an obligation for parking. Yeah. Anyway.
So keep going.
Okay. So the initial design report you have in, in the backup and that was submitted by the design team on June 30th. Basically breaks down into these areas and I'm going to go through them one by one, but you have the selection of the design team. Or you have the design team, you have field investigations, you have initial engineering, you have architectural design, you have conceptual budget. So that's how we're going to work through it here. The delivery team, this was a great experience actually because the Sunshine Lake Worth folks have a rep that's kind of pulling all the parties together, HE 2PD. And HE 2PD called me and said, here's some names of some architects, here's some names of some engineers, here's some names of some geotags. What do you think? And so I said, well, I like this one. Yeah, I don't think you want to work with that one. This one's burned some bridges with the city and so forth. So we had three in each kind of bucket, three architects, three structurals, three MEPs. And the HE 2PD folks called me back a week later or whatever and said, okay, I've gotten price proposals from everybody. And we did like this card flip where he's like, here's our architect, here's our, and everyone was my preference. I'm not joking. PGL was my preference on the architect. I've worked with ONMJ, I've worked with JLRD, I've worked with Miller Leg, I've worked with ECS. I think all these people are good and I think we have good people and they were not selected based solely on my recommendation. They were good price and good recommendation. So I think the team is a good team. And, and I think you'll see that as we go forward. But anyway, I just wanted to share that. So survey, there's not really a lot interesting about the survey. I think we all know what's out there. But there was no identified issues with parcel ownership or the topography. They did a tree survey. It's almost entirely sable palms, a handful of other trees. They assess the condition of the trees and the likelihood of potential relocation. 25 of the 33 sable palms were relocation candidates. Most of the other trees, they were not identified as such. I didn't dive into that reasoning, but you know, things that'll be looked at as the site plan process moves forward. The geotechnical investigation. So they performed six SBT borings. So they, they push down 50 to 80 feet and look at the conditions of the soils there. And then they did two exfiltration tests, which is to see how the soil soaks up water basically to a depth of 10 feet. And so the first purpose is to see how the structure of the garage can be constructed on the soil that's there. And the second is if they want to do like a drainage well or exfiltration trench to take the runoff and, and, and put it in the soil, how's that going to react? So all positive. The subsurface is basically medium dense sand, fine silty sand. And then when you get down to that 50 to 80 foot depth, you start to see some layers of limestone. And so they said, you know, shallow foundations with some improvements to the soil are sufficient. And so that's the vibro replacement or vibro compaction, kind of standard operation to construct a parking garage like this. The fear, although I didn't have it based on what I know of the, this area, would be you find some pocket of buried muck or some organic material that you can't build on. Yeah. So anyway, everything checked out and so we're on good terms and all the kind of floor slabs and things can be slabbed on great.
Ms. Malaga has a question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in reading this fabulous information, and I'm not an engineer, don't pretend to be.
It's okay.
I didn't look at the charts, but I did read. My concern, and I brought this up to Jamie with ESC and their language for the reports is it is our opinion that a four-story parking structure, they concentrated on a four-story. So my concern was if, does that mean I can't go to five stories? Does that mean, I would have liked to see some language of you could go up to or can you give some insight to that?
Excellent question. I think they were kind of given the concept, which we all kind of had, hey, we're going to try to have a four-story parking garage. And so that was the charge and the stop. I don't think there's anything that you see here that would indicate we would have an issue. And if it was.
Again, not an engineer.
Right, right. No, no, no. And if it was, I think if we do decide to go that direction, I'll revisit with ECS and ask them to amend their report to describe as such. That's an excellent point.
It's probably mildly hard to understand this thing, but hey.
Well, I'm not a PhD in soil science. I don't know.
It, it looks good and I agree. I, it's unlikely that the fifth story would.
Make a difference.
We should check it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll have the, the geotech who signs and seals this confirm. So just kind of high level initial engineering at this phase, I don't think the MEP or the civil or whatever are going to do a whole lot of heavy lifting at this point, just making sure everything makes sense. So they, the MEP, which is the Mechanical Electrical and Plumbing Engineer, you know, indicated that you should be able to get lots of natural ventilation in locations. Most of the, the garage would have easy natural ventilation because it'll be open. Recommended use of energy efficient lighting and using different types of deck drainage, plumbing materials to avoid ponding in, in the garage. I think the big take home from their side is the fire protection. So a sprinkler system with a fire pump, that's really international code and the direction that all new garages are in is requiring a fire protection system. On the structural side, really just confirmed precast was the recommended approach and, and agreed with the recommendations from the geotech. And then the civil, I have a couple of pictures here that are excerpted from Miller Leg's plans where you can see they're proposing tying into water mains on K Street and they're proposing a drainage well at, at the access, the upper right picture there at the First Avenue access.
I have a question about the handicap. It says eight ADA spaces. Is that the page before? Going back a minute, is that like the minimum requirement?
Yes, it is.
Language from company.
So we haven't quite got there. So the next, the next slide, it's okay. This slide is. This slide is boring. I don't blame you for going off.
I have a question. I, believe it or not, I actually read all of this, which I was surprised and impressed with myself, those PSI's and all this information.
Boring, yeah.
It's not boring. It's just if you're not part of it, it's like you have to do more research. So under fire protection, I highlighted the fact that they had add, it's a spaces such as mechanical equipment rooms, storage areas, and the new valet parking garage. I don't know why they put valet parking garage. So if you could please change that for future reference, because this is not for valet. I'm in the backup. And then my other question on here, under their exterior lighting, can we make sure that it's dark sky compliant on the lighting on the outside?
It's a good point.
I didn't see any language in there for that.
Things like shields and stuff like that.
Well, it did say that.
Our code requires it.
And there are, there is just spillage requirements, photometrics that can only see so many foot candles outside the building. And we'll make sure that we meet the code and, and do more if we need to.
Thank you. I just didn't see any language in, in their report. So that's why I wanted to make sure that I went over that.
Thank you for the thorough comments.
Just a little curious, where is the water likely to go?
And then Mr. Segridge.
I think that's the supply of the.
No, not the water supply, the drainage.
Oh, it's good. Right now they're proposing ejection wells in the garage.
Active wells rather than.
Right.
I don't know that, I don't think they're pumped. They're just.
Yeah, you can see them in the top.
Like a vertical exfiltration basin.
Right next to the driveway, you can see it in the top image there.
Yeah.
Mr. Segridge.
My question was actually on the, the, the geotechnical analysis. When they did the analysis, did they consider at all the possibility of subterranean levels?
No, I, I don't believe that was part of their investigation. We could look at it. I know that's what they're doing over at the Womota property. It's generally really cost prohibitive. They're doing it, you know, for their particular development, for their, their pro forma meets that. I think it would be cost prohibitive for the city to do a subterranean level is my guess.
Okay.
But no, we didn't investigate the geotech side.
I mean, the design, right now we tried to avoid that, dropping it down. Actually, the conceptual design, they drop it down about 12 inches, which isn't much. Just to get clearances for the cars to be able to go into the structure. Dropping out, down lower than that is, is cost, you know, anti-cost, right? You know, anti-efficient. You have to do a waterproofing. You know, anti-efficient. You have to do a waterproofing. Not really sure what the water table is in the geotech report, but you don't want to have to sit here and pump water out. It just adds more cost to the project.
Thank you.
So this, I wanted to include this, it's language from the comprehensive parking agreement. That is the city criteria that was provided to the developer as part of the agreement. So it says that the city would like a four-level parking structure. It gives the dimensions of that structure, approximate square footage and 280 spaces. It identifies access from First Avenue South. It describes as you questioned mayor, the eight ADA spaces, kind of the percentage preferred of how many spaces would be compact spaces and how many would be standard. Pedestrian access via two separate stairwells and a single elevator as a minimum. I know we had talked about or I'd heard comments about a second elevator as an option. We'll talk about that. And then space for EV charging stations and the required equipment to make it a garage that charges fees. If that's the direction. So that's in there. And, and Bruno, did you want to mention, you said eight ADA spaces is the.
Yeah. So I mean, the ADA code has a certain requirement based on the amount of spaces that you're combining. And eight to seven, I believe is to write the number. We're not exceeding that.
As the minimum.
And then two, and I think two of them have to be pan-accessible.
So there'll be a total of eight handicap.
Correct. And we've been putting them on every level because we can't.
That's not a lot. I mean, I just, to me, that seems like not a lot. And we have a fair, well, thank you. But it's, we're, we're an older community. We have a lot of people.
And one of the spaces, the EV spaces is also handicap accessible as well.
Yeah, but if you have an EV.
Why would you spread them across the floors and not concentrate them both?
We do. We have them on all the upper floors.
The, the upper ones are located adjacent to the elevator. So they're actually closer to the elevator than, I guess, an act, an exit if they were on the first floor.
Code really requires you to not limit accessibility to one spot. So we do have to disperse them throughout all the floors.
I'd like to.
Pump it up.
Get rid of some of the compact.
Because people are not driving compact cars these days. I mean, we have a lot of SUVs on the roads these days, but I would just, speaking as a person who from time to time uses an accessible parking situation, I think eight is, and we have none downtown on the street, which is another problem that we've identified. So if that was seen, maybe sacrifice a couple compact for that.
Compact is actually less than what the original report was. And based on the footprint that we have widthwise, going in the east-west direction, the compacts are really helping us to achieve the stability constraints of the, of the, of the garage and the site. So if we started to take, for example, the compacts are all on the inside of that right bay, you're on the inside by the ramps, you can see that vertical ramp wall. Those are all the packs are. And they're 16 feet deep instead of 18, right? So if we make those 18 like a standard, that means we need to increase the width of the garage another two feet. And that's not going to be a good thing because we're already right at our set.
I'm concerned with the setbacks.
Setbacks, the, you know, the alley access, all their good.
Can I make a quick comment on the handicap spot?
Uh, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Just a handicap. I was just thinking about it though, because if we have the eight spots in the garage, that doesn't, that doesn't preclude us because we're going to have, you know, multiple spots in the garage. It doesn't preclude us from claiming one of the street spaces or two of the street spaces as handicaps.
Start seeing.
Right. So I'm saying like, just because they're not in the garage, doesn't mean that we can't, because we increase our, our inventory of spaces, then we can change some of the ones on the street.
That's fine.
You could treat it as a campus, right? I mean, that you're downtowners. Right? And if you've got a master plan on handicap spaces and that total requirement, you put them wherever you want.
Ms. Malaga, I wish we had a master plan on handicap spaces. For five years, I've been asking for a handicap.
Ms. Malaga, I'm calling on you.
Thank you. My other question I forgot to ask on the MEP and FP schematic design narrative. Under video surveillance system, I didn't, that had the list of where the cameras would be. I didn't see a list for elevators. There needs to be cameras in the elevators, please.
There will be.
Yeah, it wasn't, again.
Always specify.
I think the two elevator is a good idea. If one goes out.
Yes, from a maintenance standpoint, it's smart move.
Okay. Keep going.
Good comments. So one of the things I think that's important, and when we first got the plan from the architect, we're of course comparing it to the criteria that we had in the agreement. And a lot of the criteria with respect to the dimensions and the number of spaces came from the WGI concept. So in the 2018 and 2024 study, they put together a general concept of what a garage could look like on K Street. But it wasn't a fully architectural design. It wasn't something that they're meeting with William and figuring out setbacks and talking to the fire marshal, the county, all that stuff. So I wanted to point out a couple of differences that I think are meaningful. And if you look on the screen on the right, you have the PGAL design that we're presenting tonight. On the left, you have the WGI concept. And if you look at the top, kind of third, you can see that the WGI concept has a lot of parking spaces in that top chunk. And in the PGAL design, you have EV spaces and then you have a closet for the fire pump that is required as part of the, you know, fire suppression system, a place to put the dumpster that'll have an overhead door that we can kind of keep it shielded from, you know, any kind of vandalism or anything at different times of the night. There's space for a transformer. There's an electrical and IT room for the cameras and for the equipment for the, being able to charge fees. And these are all things that weren't included in that concept from WGI. No shade on WGI. They were just putting floor plate together. But when you start to put the pieces together and say, we want two elevators, we, we want to have all the equipment we need to be able to have a fully functioning garage, then you start taking some of those spaces out. As we start going through the plan, the number of spaces in the WGI concept and the PGL concept on the second floor, third floor and fourth floor are almost the same. So it's not like the plan is that much different as far as fitting spaces into the rectangle. It really is on the amenities that are either necessary or kind of important or preferred. Also, PGL is coming from first, the WGI was coming off of K. PGAL looked at that north end where the EV spots and, and the dumpster and everything was and said, this is going to be an awkward dead end turnaround. Why don't we put a secondary exit? So you can have an exit onto the alley at that point is what the design has, which I think is a not a bad idea. If you see kind of right below the word alley to the right, there's an arrow pointing up. That's a secondary exit from the garage. And so there's a couple of different elements kind of that are different. Another thing, so those changes does take some of the spaces that were, could have been on the first floor out of, out of the count, if you're comparing the, the kind of criteria that we set up and the design that is before us. So that's on the space side. On the cost side, I wanted to make a note that PGAL looked at the, the width available to us and what WGI showed and said that the drive aisles are really tight in, in the, in the concept. And worked with, worked with William and the city staff and talked to the, the fire marshal and everything about making the, the whole garage, I think it's like three feet wider, two, two and a half, three feet wider. And what that allowed us to do is add a couple more feet in the drive aisles. So it's a lot safer to move back and forth within the garage as you're coming through and looking for a spot. But what that also does is add two feet more concrete, the whole length of the garage on all four floors. Makes it a little more expensive. Also, in order to, we had told them we wanted more than 250 spaces. And so the design that PGAL put together has a partial fifth floor, which we'll talk about, which is also more expensive, but tries to reach our initial discussion of the inventory we wanted to create. So all that said, we can kind of talk about what the garage they designed has and, and what it achieves. So you've got the entry exit from First Avenue, the secondary exit to the alley, seven handicaps spots, eight, if you count, I guess, the EV spot, that's also a handicap spot. I miswrote that. You've got the eight EV spots, one of which is handicap. You've got two elevators in the northeast corner, stairwells in the northeast and southeast corner. There's actually a precast canopy along the east side on K Street, built into the garage face. And the intent of that is, I think William made a really thoughtful point that that kind of canopy can offer up an opportunity for some kind of activation. If there's street painting and you wanted to set up some little booths or something along the face of the garage, you have this little canopy kind of jutting out. And he also said it fits better with kind of the downtown appearance. So I think that's a nice.
Kind of a datum gesture there with the context. Some of the existing buildings have those little concrete eyebrows in there and try to honor that kind of architecture a little bit. You know, carry that datum through there.
Ms. May?
Just a question about the parking on K Street where it says no parking. So right now that's street parking and it will be no parking?
So yeah, and I'll let Bruno talk to this too. As of right now, there's a back and forth discussion with the fire marshal from the county. They're saying that they want to be able to park a ladder truck at that location for fire safety purposes. I know Womota had the same element presented to them over in their development, from what I heard. I wasn't at that meeting, but in their discussion, they were able to explain, I guess, with the fire pump and the sprinkler and all those things, that that wasn't necessary. And the last I heard from them, they were getting that waived. So right now in our plan, it's what the fire marshal told us, but we're trying not to take that for an answer and push. So I don't want to lose nine spaces on the street.
No, not at all.
But it's kind of.
The trade, the trade-off is going to be that originally they were wanting to use the alleyways to be able to access the garage. Problem with the alleyways is there's not enough space there.
No.
If you ever walked in that alleyway, some of it, some of the, the utility poles are actually almost, you're like they're in the middle of the alleyway. And there's all kinds of stuff back there. So they want about 20 feet of clearance. You know, and then with some kind of a little bit of a setback, you know, and then you have, if you get the truck in there, how does it get out? Then they need a turning radius of X. It's like 30 feet inside turning radius. So how does that work? And it's really, it, it impacts the functionality of the garage. So the trade-off is, is to allow them to access the garage from K Street, which requires us to remove those parallel spaces out there.
There were nine, but we are, like I said, still trying to see if we can argue with it. Well, we'll see.
We have base.
Okay, so also the dumpster access from the alley, PGAL proposed an overhead door, which I think is a nice element. So you can kind of lock it up at night or various points if, if needed. And then the setback is something to note, as everybody's aware, the concept and was discussed in one of the items, a couple items before us for relocated 17 South M would be inside that setback on the south edge, and that's part of the design.
I'm back. Ms. May has another question.
What if we don't move the buildings?
Yeah, so.
That's going to be my question all night.
Yeah, okay. So I don't, just as full disclosure, we did not create a plan, a secret plan of no buildings there. But we kind of ran some numbers and you could probably get 10 spots in the range of 10 spots per floor if you brought the parking garage down to first. So you could add, you know, maybe 30, 40 spots to the garage if you brought it down to first.
And the, and for the lawyer, city manager, if we wanted to do that, how would we do that? I mean, we're going to talk about it.
Well, and I think a couple of other things that I, I'd just like to note. So before.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an excellent question.
Okay, we're going to talk.
Yeah, yeah. I, I was texting Bruno earlier, like, we really need to be prepared to talk.
It's not fiscally responsible to move no sources.
That's for you guys to decide, but I'll just try to present the information. So the, the agreement is that Womota gives the city $500,000 to relocate them. If you choose not to or find others, some other thing, they still owe us the $500,000. You could spend that on the garage or the alley or something like the Arts Alley extension. I don't know. But again, that's something for your side. When I tell Bruno, hey, what happens to the garage if it comes down an additional to, you know, the 50 feet or whatever we can get to the setback? He, he was describing to me some really thoughtful changes where right now, because you have a kind of a shorter length, in order to get up one whole floor in the length to go, you know, from north to south and back to north, both ramps have to be at an angle, like a scissor. So you have to go uphill, uphill, uphill every time you go. If you make the garage longer, then you can get the full length to go from level one to level two only on one side of the garage.
This is like a slope problem for my middle school kids. I'm bringing this problem.
It, it, it completely is. So if we go to the full length of the block, you'd actually have one side of the garage that's a flat deck and one side of the garage that's a ramp, which is more efficient. When you look at some of the like minutia of the calculations here, the square footage per the number of spots you get is decent, but not great on the efficiency. As you make the garage longer, you have better turns around the edges at the, at the ends and you have the flat slopes on one side and the slopes on there. I would be remiss if I didn't mention what William has said at various points when we talk about these things is the concept of that building is kind of the buffer from the street to the garage. You have that kind of.
But if you look at the other side of South First Street, they're two-story, maybe three-story buildings anyway. So you're not, it's not contrasting with like a little tiny cottage or something.
I just want to say, I'm remiss if.
I know, that's what he said, but I am going to counter that point with, we're not looking, you're not going to be looking down into some little cottage.
Yeah. And let me let Bruno speak because I've been talking loud.
Oh, but the cottage actually, there's a two-story building, the one on the corner. But as far as the, the ramping goes, potentially by stretching out that, that footprint, you could make it more efficient by limiting the, one of those ramps and just having one ramp on one side, which is going to improve ADA accessibility. It's going to make better clearances, better wayfinding. Cause now you don't have the two ramps, you know.
Probably reduce safety risk.
Yeah, yeah. In those kind of, not that it doesn't work. I mean, we do this stuff all the time, but we're just making even better, what I call the level of service, right? And by extending out the, the footprint, we can make the turning radiuses at the end base even better. Because right now that's kind of tight, set a 24-foot drive aisle, which is, that means those cars, when they come and they're coming at each other, potentially, and you've probably all been in a parking lot where those, those ends are tight. You come to the stop bar and you make that turn and you got to wait for the other person to go.
Right.
So the, what we like to do is actually in a public garage, make those, those ends a little bit wider, say 26, 27. Not that they're going to overlap. You're still going to have that because there's no way you're going to go and make something where nobody, everybody just passes by each other. But you can make it a little bit better. So it just makes things safer.
Okay, thank you.
What about?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, to interrupt, but can I have a motion to extend the meeting till 11:00, please?
Motion to extend till 11:00, please.
Second by May.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't sound so enthusiastic.
Mr. Segridge and I both have.
I, I, stop, stop, stop.
He was starting to talk.
Yeah, you can't talk until I call him. Okay, Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. So I'm going to be Dappel's advocate to Ms. May. And let's just say hypothetically, we did move those houses and we did extend the garage. Could we now then shorten the part by the alley to facilitate the fire trucks and not have to worry about losing the nine on K Street?
Yeah, you can push it, push it all down and, and maybe improve that. The, the key is that corner.
That's what I'm saying. If you're, if you're, it's so tight. Okay. So I'm just saying, if we could do that, then we wouldn't have to lose the nine spots on K Street.
I'll come with, yes.
We could, we could back up the alley, improve that whole area and use that as a, as an ease for the fire trucks.
No, you're, you're right. There's a potential for that to, to work.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Since we never actually answered Commissioner May's question, then we kind of kept rolling.
Let's give it a whirl.
I want to call my lifeline, Annie Greening. Come on down. Because if we're going to go down this kind of line of, of conversation, we should probably address if we did ship the garage further south and we're not looking to now relocate 17 South M there. From HRPB standpoint, or, it is kind of hot. Can you discuss what that process would look like or how that would work?
So.
So tomorrow night, the HRPB is having their special meeting for the Womota development. Part of that is a certificate of appropriateness for relocation of 17 South M Street and 26 South L Street. As what's proposed to them is relocating 17 South M Street to this location. So if it were to be relocated elsewhere, we would likely need to bring an amendment to that COA to the HRPB for their review and approval. Not relocating here doesn't make it magically go away.
No, we want to make it magic. We want it gone. We just want to knock it down.
So.
Can we just?
Demolition review would need a COA from the HRPB. That is not what's ever been proposed to them. It's not what's coming to them tomorrow. It would be an entirely separate process. That would need, you know, its own public hearings and all of that. So what's going tomorrow is their review and approval or denial of relocation.
But after it goes to them, it has to come to us.
Not the COAs. The COAs stop with them. They are the final decision makers for those. What will continue on to you guys is the rezoning and the plan development for the overall project. But the certificates of appropriateness do not need your approval.
So unelected people are going to make the final decision on those homes?
So that's the HRPB's role. That's what you all appoint them for. Is to make decisions on things like new construction, relocation and demolition. That's, that's their main job.
Mr. Segred.
So, so just a point of clarification, in the agreement about moving or not moving these, it says the city has the option. And we as, I'm just asking, we as the commission, I asked this before, could vote to not move them and give direction of staff to not move them. Is that correct?
Really?
You can absolutely make the decision not to move them, but what to ultimately do with them in terms of whether relocate or demolition, that initially goes to HR.
Initially or finally?
So we, we, we could make that decision to say hypothetically, not move them. Now, we could make a decision hypothetically, say, let's demolish them. That would have to go to HRPB. They could reject that. And then the city could appeal it to the commission. Is that also correct?
Yes, appeals from HRPB go to city commission and then to circuit court from there. It would have to, you would have to find that the HRPB's finding was arbitrary and capricious, did not align with our criteria. It could not just be that you all want to demolish it. It would have to be based on certain criteria for appeals in our code.
And what was the criteria that this was declared a contributing structure?
So we had historic surveys done generally between 1998 and 2002 that established our six historic districts. Three of those historic districts are also national register districts. The, the boundaries are a little different than our local districts. We had a re-survey in 2020 that was not formally adopted by you all, but we do still have all of that data and information. Professional architectural historians went throughout the city, did generally what's referred to in the industry as a windshield survey. So they weren't necessarily, you know, walking into everyone's house, that sort of thing. And assessed the historic integrity of various sections of the city. So this was assessed in, I want to say that this district was the late 90s. Found to be contributing at that point. And in 2020, the recommendation was for it to stay contributing. It retains its historic integrity.
So both of the buildings were found very early on to be contributing?
Correct.
And by completely gutting and modernizing the building, that doesn't change it?
No, so generally historic designation for, especially for things like districts, is focused on the exterior of the structure. Same as how our historic preservation planners, if you're, you know, remodeling your kitchen and it doesn't change the outside of your house, we have no say over that. So historic districts especially are focused on the exterior because that is what the experience of the overall district is. I don't necessarily know what it looks like on the inside from the street. So the inside doesn't matter so much.
And, and so both of these structures, just to confirm, were declared contributing as part of the original survey?
Correct.
Okay. And so if, if we made the choice, it would have to go before HRPB? And then they render a decision and possibly appeal with that.
Yes, it's on or off, I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went to HRPB, when the CRA went to HRPB years ago, the ruling at that time was that we could either, and it didn't include 17 South M, but it did include 26, and the ruling at that point was that we could either move them or demolish them.
That's my.
Yes, for L Street.
That's what they say.
And forgive me, I'm, you know, having to recall back to prior to my time with the city, but I believe the discussion at that point was relocation or demolition. That was obviously prior to actual, any actual development. At that point, we were still looking at developing surface parking lots. Things have, you know, shifted since then, but I do believe that there, yeah, it was discussion of relocation or demolition at that point.
So the agreements do say relocation or demolition. So would that have to go back to HRPB if we've already got that choice in the legal documents? So they approve it, we write up the legal document, then they have to approve it again?
Yeah, so it's. So there's a few things. I mean, COAs do have an expiration date in general. It can get a little funky, funky when it's, you know, the city's own property or in this case CRA property, but that COA would be superseded by the COA that is going tomorrow for relocation. That is part of that development that was proposed and part of what was applied for. So that would be superseding a previous COA for relocation or demolition.
So tomorrow night is to get a COA for moving it.
So yes, tomorrow night is rezoning of some of the parcels, the plan development and COAs for relocation, demolition of 501 Lake Avenue and new construction.
So is our original COA expired?
That did expire. I spoke with William about this previous.
I'm sorry, can you speak into your mic?
That is my understanding that the COAs that were applied for originally have expired. And so that they would have to go back through the process for all of these ones that are concerned to be relocated.
Or demoed.
Or demoed, correct.
Okay. Those are my, my questions for now. I mean, just, just in general, I, I do think this, you know, given the timing of it, I do think it would be appropriate for us to give direction to staff about what's going on with this COA going before. Because if we push forward in this manner, it kind of ties our hands a little bit. It makes it much difficult to make a change. And I think we've discussed significant things about this design where there could be advantages to not have those buildings there. And so, you know, we can discuss alternatives, like giving the building away, putting it on another lot.
We've tried that.
But, you know, if, if we can't give the building away, that should tell us something about the nature of the building.
Well, not necessarily, but Mr. McBoy?
He told me to turn it off, so I did. Um, thank you. It does seem like we're in a bit of a complicated spot. I too hear the arguments of, they seem practical. If, if we didn't have to deal with these historic buildings and protection of our historic downtown, it would obviously, and I think I actually mentioned it months ago that geez, you know, it kind of makes more sense to run, if you're going to do a parking garage, run it all the way to the bottom. I get that. I am not inclined to diminish our historic fabric. I would solve that problem by not moving them and not demolishing them. But I understand that has some other complication. The, the reason I had the light on earlier was as we're considering all this, I think we heard that there are some practical benefits. But there's some cost implications too. Are they 10%, 20%, 50%? I doubt they're 50, but can you give us any sort of a ballpark so that we're aware of that information too? Or is that not, and that may not be a fair question. I'm not sure.
Oh, I think it's a totally fair question. I'm just, unfortunately, I don't have a great answer for you. As I was saying, I, I, we didn't create like an alternate plan and behind the curtain. But, but it is, I mean, as you extend the garage to the south, you're adding more square footage of concrete, more steel, more lighting. You just have, it's more expensive.
Is it reasonable to guess at a rough figure that it's linear, not that there's something, oh, we suddenly went over a threshold of schlepping these prefabricated pieces? And now you doubled your costs because we hit some threshold? Is it a linear extrapolation by area reasonable?
Well, there's the, the precast system really wants to be set on a module and it's typically it's 36 feet on center. So you would, if we were to extend this, you would want to be efficient. Maximize efficiency by maintaining that 36, 36 foot base spacing.
Right.
And actually, there's a little piece in the middle that's a little bit shorter. It's seven or eight, which makes it a little inefficient, but we're trying to stay within those psych constraints, so we had to smoosh it. But if you were to, if you were to take those pieces and make them per the standard module, it's going to make it more efficient and more cost effective too. But there's going to be minor costs based on, once we extend this thing out another, say, 36, 40 feet, it, it's just going to add costs. It's just a natural delta there.
But my question is, is a rough, you know, yardstick for us to guess on that it's a linear extrapolation on area? Ballpark.
It, I would, I would base it on, on, on cost per space. So if, if the spaces are running about 30,000 per space and you're at 40, doing the math, I don't know what that is, right?
Yeah, that would be 1.2 million.
Right, and then you'd have.
Extra.
And you just have to, you'd have to back that out of the number that we have in the estimate.
Okay, that's helpful. So, yeah, I, I agree. I think it's early to say exactly what it would be. And I'd like to know kind of all the moving parts of what we're deciding. There's a few other things to, to discuss. And I'd like to try to get with the full design team, but you know, with Bruno especially, to maybe have, because we're going to have one on ones. This is again a discussion in a couple of weeks. And then August 19th, we're going to have a decision. Hopefully, maybe by the one on ones, we could have a real number for that, that we don't have at this time. And we can see, I, I'm very hopeful that that million dollars is on the high side, but you know, we, we can't tell you right now.
That's not just precast. You got fire protection.
Right, right. There's a bunch of things.
More heads, more lights, more now more power for those lights. So, you know, it's a bit more complicated than just throwing a little number at it.
Okay, Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. Hi, Joan. So Joan's going to be my phone a friend. Listening to everything that we have going on with the houses on M Street. Do, does the CRA still have the property at the southeast corner of First and K? Where you were going to put affordable housing? So as a hail Mary, if we had, if we decided as a body to extend the garage, shorten the alley, whatever, could we move? I know you're not, you're looking at my house. Could we move the properties that are on M to that corner? And could we incorporate that into more affordable housing?
Well, 17 South M is not housing. It's, it's offices.
But if we didn't go that way, I'm just thinking outside the box.
Okay.
Okay, we're not going to use it as office. Jamie and his crew can figure that part out.
I would say yes, the possibility exists, but the cost of doing that, doing, you know, historic rehabilitation and then on top of it, changing it from office to home. I mean, you're, now you're really talking a lot of money and I don't know who would be able to afford that, you know, speaking of nonprofits and things like that that we usually deal with.
You're talking about making 17 South, that would be like a one family house. It wouldn't be.
Again, I'm just trying, because if we get, if the historical board tomorrow decides that we have to keep these, I'm trying to say, okay, if that's, if that's where we have to go, what could be our backup plan? And I know that we have, the CRA has that land available and I know that we're supposed to use it for office space. But it is a larger home. It could be broken into individual, single apartments. I, I'm just trying to think outside the box, that's all. Well, because it seems like we're throwing a wrench in this conversation because HRPB is literally less than 24 hours in it.
Right, but also don't remember that 17 South M, moving it over here was supposed to house your recreation department.
Right, yeah, Jamie can help each other, please.
That's when we get a new city hall.
I'm doing studying faces right now.
It's getting late.
It's still taking.
I, for what it's worth, discussion of relocation to another site within the historic district is a much easier COA amendment to do than changing it to demolition. There, you know, if there's the possibility of a creative solution for another site to relocate it to, you know, let's say the cultural council needs more office space and they want to put it on their site. That, that is a world which is much easier for the HRPB to amend.
Sure, but like, oh, where? Hang on, one more question. Is L Street property is part of the HRP's conversation term as well?
The L Street property is part of the overall Womota plan development. They are being vested for potential residential, including affordable housing there. But there's no particular development proposed. They're just getting vested for density.
No, no, I'm talking about, I don't know the address, 7th, what is it?
26.
26.
Oh, sorry, I was thinking of the other South Hill. Yes, 26 South Hill is also part of the discussion tomorrow and they are also being proposed to be relocated to 30 South K Street.
So unrelated to this, it, it doesn't complicate it like this.
But if we decided we didn't want to move that building for cost savings, we could not change that now because it's part of tomorrow as well?
It's the same situation. Yes, it's part of that relocation COA.
Mr. Segred.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we, we can instruct staff not to bring this COA forward.
No, we're not the applicant for the COAs tomorrow.
Who, who's the applicant?
Sunshine Lake Worth, the CRA, the cultural council.
So they can choose not to bring it forward?
It's been advertised and published. It would be, and the analysis in the staff reports discusses and.
I, I understand that we are far down this process, but the city owns these buildings. We still own this, those properties. We can say no right now on that agreement and then not allow them to move it. There are properties. So we can put a stop to this now. It's in the agreement that says we, we have the choice. We didn't sell them. We didn't transfer them yet. Title's not out of our, our name. We can instruct staff to do something different.
Under the relocation agreement, you are correct. We have the ability to say whether they can be relocated and where they be relocated to. Or we can make the decision to demolish. However, just like in all these agreements, that doesn't take away from the proper approval authority.
Understood.
So, but what the agreement does say for Womota is that this, in the relocation agreement, is that we've got to make that decision. So as part of Womota's to get their entitlements, they have to go to HRPB to get the COA to allow them to move, relocate those buildings. Because that is the most recent decision by the city commission. So if they go to HRPB tomorrow and get the COA to relocate them, that's one decision. If the city commission decides at the next meeting where this is going to come back for an actual vote, that, hey, we don't want to relocate them to this property or we want to demolish, then the direction will be to provided to go back to HRPB and. and ask for that COA to be amended either to relocate or to demolish. Now, obviously, Annie said if we are going to relocate to a different location, that's probably an easier amendment to the COA. But if you're going to ask to demolish, then we've got to come up with the evidence that would dictate under the HRPB regulations, why the city can demolish.
If they make a decision, if HRPB, so let me just ask, let me just a theoretical question tonight. Even though it's not on the agenda, could we sitting here, which I mean, I can't even believe we're asking this question, but could we sitting here take a vote to demolish those buildings and take it away from the HRPB?
I don't believe so under your regulations. You could take a vote tonight to direct staff to move forward with the demolition process, but that would then require a trip to HRPB for the initial step of that approval process to get the COA to demolish. Because, because, because by code, you guys have delegated the authority to the Historic Preservation Board to make that decision. The appeal process comes back here, but the initial step of that approval process goes to HRPB. Think of it just like permitting a building. Permitting a building doesn't come to the commission, it goes to your building official. So even though you may say.
Paid physician, not a volunteer.
And that's it, that's it, that's a different policy decision. But right now, the current code, you've given that policy decision to HRPB. And that's where it's got to go first.
And I'm, I'm going to reiterate, I mean, appealing something like it's, it's a quasi judicial and you have to show that it's arbitrary, that there was no substantial competent evidence to support the decision that they made. And that's going to be, that's a high standard.
So that's what, if the direction is that commission wants to see them demolished, then my recommendation would be let it go for tomorrow. Let them at least get a COA to relocate. Then staff can look at the idea of if you wanted to demolish those buildings, what kind of evidence would staff need to come up with to apply for the COA to demolish?
Okay, let me throw something out. Impossibility is always a defense. And impossibility is if there's no funding and/or no practical place to put that. If we make a decision tonight to extend it down, which is, which loses, and I mean, it's breaking my heart. I mean, this is something I was like, one of the reasons I ran years ago. But um, if we made the decision tonight to make it, to consider going farther down, which would eliminate the place for 17 South M. I mean, that would make it impossibility to put the building there, you know what I want.
I hear what you're saying. I'm not an expert in the historic, but the one thing I've always learned from William Waters is that like any hardship, economic hardship is not the determining factor. There's got to be more, because otherwise nobody would ever relocate a historic structure if it was just economic hardship. So maybe that there's no other viable place, maybe.
Where else are we going to put these?
Other factors that I think staff could look at and consider and come up with some type of evidence would be the best bet.
I'm, and I'm about to call on him. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the guidance. Mr. Brown. He's in the middle of, she's in the middle of a conversation.
So. If we're having uh, the relocation conversation to a different location, keep in mind that in order to even get them to where we were talking about relocating them to, our power lines.
Our what?
Are the lines, our electric utility lines need to be underground before that even takes place. So if we're looking for other locations, just keep in mind that in order to do that, those lines are going to have to be addressed either underground or that structure would have to be taken apart uh, further.
They can't, they disconnect. I mean, I've seen houses move where they disconnect, you know, they undo the wires to get the house through. There's a wire going across the street.
I use, we use a broom and kind of push it up a little bit. Just to, um, it, it's, it's a, it's a substantial process. And that would be something I would want to definitely have uh, our electric utility director. Because keep in mind, there, there are a lot of um, poll traction agreements on some of these polls as well. So it's not just our lines. Um, that would have to be addressed on these polls. So to say move these in a opposite direction, three or four blocks of, th- this is a, a huge thing.
And Mr. Segred, Mr. McBoy, Ms. May.
So. How much of an impact would it have to the project timeline if they didn't go before HRPB this month and just waited one month until we could work out a potential solution?
After re-advertisement.
Um, we would have to re-advertise. The earliest it could get to HRPB would be August and then maybe September to you guys. I mean, I can't really speak to what sort of negative impacts that would have for the developers and their timelines. But it would be at least a month.
Okay, so about a month or two months. Let's, let's call it two months just to be safe because that happens to our residents all the time. They get bumped and bumped and bumped with HRPB for years. So it's not uncommon. The applicant is Womota, Sunshine and the CRA? A, a three-party applicant?
Sunshine, CRA and Cultural Council.
Cultural Council?
Yeah.
So if one of those entities decide to not bring it forward tomorrow, it doesn't go forward?
I mean, in a courtesy element, people have come in from out of town expecting to go attend this meeting tomorrow.
I, 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 I do understand it, but we, we are talking about spending $2 million of taxpayer money, potentially putting a, the biggest development that the city is undertaking with these taxpayers' dollars in I don't know how long to come up with an inferior design because it's an inconvenience. That doesn't bother me. We inconvenience our residents all the time. I could tell you hundreds of horror stories with HRPB. I hear them all the time. I understand it's an inconvenience, but this is $2 million. I think it deserves time and we need to do whatever we can to basically come up with a solution that's real. People talk about the Bohemian garage and how bad of a, a screw up it was and everything like that for the city. Let's not do that again. I know, no, but I'm.
Yeah, but I mean, we're about to make a really bad decision.
But you know, this is mo-, this is a monumental project for this city. And I could think of 15 different ways that we can make a decision tonight that will prevent them from moving it. If we give direction on our land that we own right here, there's no spot for it. Too bad, so sad. You can't actually move it. You can't force us to move it.
I think Jamie wants to make a comment.
Uh, yeah, so Madam Attorney, um, based on the direction the conversation is going, you, you're, your previous recommendation of moving forward with the COAs tomorrow night. And then on the back end, coming back, is that, would that be the best recommendation? If the ultimate result would be to try and get to a point where we would want to suggest demolition? Should this move forward tomorrow night or is there a better course of action? Absolutely not.
Turn your microphone on.
Is it too late to amend the application for tomorrow? Okay.
Stat could pull.
Is it? Annie, do you know if it's too late for one or more of the parties that are the applicant to request a continuance?
Um.
Could the city could request a continuance?
We would still, I think, need to meet to continue to a date certain to avoid having to re-advertise.
Okay, but if one of the applicants were to ask for a continuance, then the board would just have to.
To vote to.
To continue it to a time certain?
Yes.
So what we could do is between now and um, the meeting tomorrow night, uh, talk to the applicants and see if they'd be willing to uh, request a continuance and uh, continue it to a date and time certain a month from now. Um, so that it, the city commission could look at this further and make a decision on how it wants to proceed with.
Okay, and could we accommodate the applicant? I was just saying, could we accommodate the applicant to appear by zoo rather than flying down here? I mean, if we could stop her.
They, um, I don't know if they've already arrived or not. Um, but we can check.
I don't think so. Ms. Pilega, Mr. McBoy.
I, I just asked, is there a financial implications to us if we do this? Because I know there is a timeline, there is a agreement that we all agree to. And if we as the commission now have decided, which happens all the time with this commission, that's doing about face, is there a financial strain on us? Could, could we be liable for anything?
At this time, I'm not aware of the impact on the timelines that are in um, the relocation agreement and the underlying development agreement. We'd have to go look at those and talk with Womota um, about the timelines and how that changes things. Um, but as I recall offhand, uh, it does have some flexibility in the schedule. So we just have to look at it. Also, keep in mind, under the relocation agreement, if the decision is to demolish, then that 500,000 that we going to use to relocate can go to the garage. However, if that, that means they've all got to be demolished. If you relocate to a different location, then that money doesn't go to the garage.
And the money that we would save by demolishing them, the $750,000, whatever is.
No, it's 2 million.
With, with all, with both of them, right?
Right, so if there was $500,000 they're going to give us, okay? Let's say Jamie said today it was 40 grand to knock them down. So that, let's make it 50 grand.
So to move them with two, to move.
To move them and, and rehab them is $2 million. To knock them down roughly is about 100 grand. That gives us 400 grand left that we can put into the garage. It just doesn't make any sense.
I think the other thing worth remembering is the financial impact of expanding the garage. So a big point of the presentation that Bren's got tonight today is the trade-offs of what we can or can't do in certain budgets. So if we're expanding the garage, we're going to have to factor that into that discussion tonight of this is also a budget impact for the garage overall. So just a kind of a, a, back to the big picture, what we, what we're trading off with the garage. It's, you know, one or two elevators, design level. Do we expand? Do we do the fifth level? That, that would kind of get added, I would think, to the list of what do we want to, how much do we really want to spend? How much are we willing to go over our original idea for the budget?
Can I just say that, that, that 1.9 million dollar budget that was put together by various um, city staff is a budget? It's not cash. It's not cash we have. So I don't, not sure where um, that 800,000 dollars, once it is moved, comes from. I don't know if the city's budgeted it for next year or not. Pardon me?
For the rehab.
Yeah, for the rehab. Um, and just on another note, I think, um, I think it's worthwhile just postponing it.
The HRPB?
Yep.
Mr. Segred and Mr. McBoy and then Ms. Norman.
I, I was just going to say, um, the additional design considerations, because I, I do want to continue to talk about the, the garage itself. I thought, you know, we're, we're, we're very creative that, that you had it, had in there. The, the 8.1 million dollar budget gives us a plain, Jane, vanilla, concrete garage that probably everyone will hate. You know, adding the um, artistic accents to it, I think is a must do. Mayor, you brought up two elevators, I think that's a must do. You brought up, we need extra handicap spaces. I think seven is anemic for, for that garage. Having to have used them before, you know, I, I think there's a lot of considerations. And then we look at the total, what's the net gain of spaces? And when you eliminate the nine from uh, K Street, we're only talking about adding 100 spaces unless we do some of these things like expand the garage and go to five levels. I think, you know, the amount of money we were looking at spending on moving those buildings, if we applied that to the garage, we could get close to the top end number of achieving all of those add-ons that, that we're going to be talking about on it. And, and then maybe even some more. Because I, you know, one of my big concerns with, with this is, is this garage eliminating green space? And, you know, I would like to see, you know, I see you have half of the fifth level developed. Maybe the other half becomes a green rooftop, whether it's a park space or a cafe space or some sort of community space um, that's green, has trees, has landscaping, is lush on the roof. Um, because once you go up four stories or five stories in this town, you see the intercoastal and the ocean. I mean, so you know, we have the opportunity here to make this garage not only a utilitarian asset in terms of the number of spaces, because I think we've got to be above 250. Otherwise, we're just adding 100 spaces, whatever. We, you know, we, we can do that somewhere else probably. But if we're going to do this and do it right for five or 10 years down the road, I think we got to be above 250. But I also want us to consider looking at that rooftop and getting in some of the green elements um, uh, to it. And I, and I just, I, I see the money that we've allocated towards these two buildings as a potential swap for that. And, you know, I think as staff and this commission and with legal, we got to figure out whatever we can do to, to figure out this conundrum with the um, certificate of provenness. My last comment on it is every single time I asked about this topic, I was told that the agreement gave us the right to choose. And had we not brought this up today, we would have almost lost that right to choose per that agreement. And, you know, in, it's in the spirit of that, I, I don't think we're going back and reversing. Um, I, I think it's the agreement. I think some of us up here had the impression that we still had the right to choose. And it wasn't the 11th hour um, for this. So um, whatever we got to do to figure out how to postpone it, I think that's the most wise decision. And it gives us time to work with staff to figure this all out, as well as work with the, 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 the players involved and try to come up with something creative to, to save 17 South M if that's the plan. But, you know, at, at, at some point, you know, logic and, and fiscal responsibility have to prevail um, over this, so.
You're up.
Thank you. Um. This is complicated. Um. Maybe I'll try to reiterate some objectives, things that are important to me that I think are important to some of the people. Uh, one, I'll agree with something that I think Commissioner Segred has alluded to that this might generate a delay for the developer. We do, we have lots of delays that happen to smaller projects to residents in this town all the time. And sometimes they're much, much longer than a month. I think the allusion to a year, I'm sure we could find examples. So, and you know, the concept of, well, it's inconveniencing the folks that are flying down from New York or whatever. I think we have bigger decisions, they're going to have to, to deal with that. So I agree with, with that view. Obviously, we don't want to go our way and just be obnoxious, but I don't think that's what's happening here. What's happening is there's some big stuff. There's some things that are squishing square pegs in round holes that are, and there are reasonable considerations of, you know, it might make a lot of sense to extend this thing. So I, I'm supportive of the plan of let's find somebody who will agree to pull back on the meeting tomorrow. Uh, I don't know who that would be, but. But um, our attorney is busy looking to see if they might be found in the computer. There's someone um. Uh, so I would now, on the other side of things, I know that there is a very big I don't know if it's big. There is a very strong constituency, the mayor, I believe, included, and perhaps Commissioner Malaga, that has a commitment to the historic aspect of our community. I don't know how you balance all that against the practicalities, the cost, where you're gonna put these things. I do would reiterate what I said earlier. It's not just buildings, it's also the fabric, so it matters where they are. That's a bigger, probably W motive question. But uh, I would like us to keep in mind that there was a lot of unhappiness with how the whole process of kicking people out of these historic structures, letting them kind of some of them go bad because there was nobody in them for many years. Uh, there's some unhappiness about that and that should be taken into account. Um. I hope I don't have to fix all these problems at once, but that's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Malaga, and then I'm gonna make a comment. Um.
I think that we as a body are up here to make decisions. I think that um, has nothing to do with how many people are coming in. We have had ample time to make decisions in regards to this. I wish that we would have had this presentation on the gr- on the garage design earlier. Um, I would like to ask Annie, is there any way that we as the body, because of the agreement, can just take the move of these properties out of the COA conversation tomorrow?
Without postponing it.
Without postponing it. So I don't know that you all can do that, because again, you're not the applicants, you know, just like.
Even though we own the land and own the houses. Or the CRA.
The CRA, yeah.
We own harder.
So.
Could the CRA take the the move of them out?
We are going to look into if we can just take the relocation COA out. I'll be honest, it's ten thirty and my brain is dying a little bit. Um. But we will look into if we can just pull or continue the relocation part of the COA. The the sticking point in my brain right now is that new construction COAs are going tomorrow. New construction obviously presupposes that the buildings that are on the sites will have something, yeah, not be there.
Not be there by some accord.
Exactly. So not having a COA request for what will be happening to those is a little weird. But um.
If you said that the commission is still undecided because it's a bigger picture for us than just moving or demolishing, and we've had this, you know, obviously, we're here at almost eleven o'clock at night having this discussion.
Would, can I ask a question? And then along practically speaking, we're trying to figure this out. Could the reload, I mean, could the relocation be set aside tomorrow? But this, because it's a site plan that they really wanted, they wanna move on their site plan. So could they do the site plan part of it without having the relocation, give us the opportu- you know, take the relocation to Right, but then but they wanna, but for them for them to continue to go forward, because they're they've got their whole team coming down. So they could then continue to go forward with their site plan, assuming that those houses will aren't gonna, they're not gonna be there, assuming for whatever. Right, somehow they're not gonna be there. Could we do that?
Um, Madam Mayor, one thought I had was, um, I think if they took out the COA for the relocation, made it the other approvals conditioning conditioned upon returning to HRPB to address the relocation or whatever's to happen with those, then you could potentially move forward with the other approvals conditioned upon a return to HRPB to address these buildings.
They can all still come down, they can talk about the site plan based on if.
So you would still have the same assumption that there's going to be some type of approval that's gonna happen with those buildings to then facilitate new construction. Does it all be conditioned on coming back?
And then at that point, we can have the conversation on contributing structures or non-contributing and what that looks like. Or where they go or if they go.
Yeah.
Correct?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so we've taken care of it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Mr. McBoy, then.
We specify, do we need to specify?
She keeps turning it, turn it off.
Sorry, could you turn on your mic?
Yeah, we got it. Thank you. Um. We talked about moving something to a time certain, and I guess it would be the version two of the COA. Are we boxing ourselves in by saying that it has to be in a month? It, can we sort all this stuff out in that timeframe? I wouldn't want us to agree to, you know, tell the developer, hey, we are gonna have this for sure. Or if we are gonna tell them for sure, then at least let's make sure we've got enough time to do it. If that's two months or one month or a month and a half or I I don't know. I just wanna make sure that we don't
So when we were talking about continuing to a date certain, that was when we were like, we're gonna continue the whole project. If we are pulling the relocation COAs and conditioning the other approvals upon the relocation or whatever discussion returning to them, we could just that that doesn't need to be the date certain. We could condition it to say, you know, within one year of this approval, we will be back to the HRPB for approvals for these structures.
I wouldn't say one year, because I see some heart attacks happen.
Sorry, I was giving a large example.
Mr. Bren.
I just wanted to mention that we do still have five slides left. We gotta cut in the middle of the presentation. Just wanted to remind everyone, we're not.
It must be fun at parties. Do we have homework, Mr.?
It was an important conversation.
No apologies necessary. I'm enjoying not being the one talking. It's fine.
All right.
I don't think Annie's enjoying it as much as I am, that all the questions are for her, but uh.
Okay, so we have um, just a few minutes left before we have to go. Um, Mr., you use your light on? We, your hand was over it, so I couldn't see it. He's sneaky. Right.
Um, what are the requirements to condemn a structure?
Oh. That is a question for the building official. It's it's building code stuff.
Okay.
Well, you can find that out.
Okay.
Okay, let's. Okay, so do you wanna keep going with these five slides?
I'll I'll try to go, I'll try to go very quickly. So really, I think um, we already kinda touched on and a lot of folks have already seen, uh, so I'll try to be quick. Um, as Commissioner Se- Segred had pointed out, uh, there's a vanilla garage. Uh, the first design that kinda came forward, uh, we had full agreement. We loved kinda that middle concept as a as an idea with the aluminum uh, window frames or glassless uh, colored paneling, uh, painted uh, kind of a cityscape look. And then once the pricing came in, uh, then I said, okay.
Maybe not.
We need to have options that I can bring to you. So I said, one of these options has to be below eight point five million dollars. And so that's the base uh, is part of the the eight point one million. The garage that is eight point one million dollars has a precast concrete uh, that you can add a colored pigment into and an external sealer. So you could have maybe not just gray, it could be a white or uh, something like that, but.
Colored concrete.
Right, integrated in the concrete, but it's gonna be, uh, as was mentioned, kind of vanilla, the 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 better or the more appealing option, which was designed uh, by PGA L had this kind of glassless window frames and these aluminum paneling um, features that you could potentially attach landscaping to uh, some of these uh, exterior panels, things like that.
Some of that green was uh, vegetation. Um, artificial vegetation.
I love them, but you know, after a couple of years, it it looks.
Artificial.
No, no.
I don't think that.
That's a hard no.
Yeah, we have been getting a week, but there's some really, really good artificial stuff. Very, very. Native species art.
All right, all right.
So yes, uh, and then uh, kind of uh, to add, um, so I think it was about seventy thousand uh, to just paint it uh, some colors, but not do any cladding. And then would be more than, so you could maybe do the yellow, the blue, uh, the the green and things as just a paint uh, as an additional, or you could do a mural uh, that you would bring some in and that that would be more than seventy thousand, but would be uh, cheaper than say the cladding and everything. Um, and then again, on the garage, so just kinda running through, uh, there's a kind of a three rendering that PGA L Bruno and his team put together, and you can see this fifth floor that's only on the north side of the building, and that's to get up to the two hundred fifty nine spaces. So it's two hundred and thirty one, the eight point one million dollar garage is two hundred and thirty one, uh, and you kinda see second, third and fourth floor are sixty six spaces, which is pretty much the same as the WGI concept. That's what you can fit in this rectangle. But the the first floor has only thirty three, based on all the other amenities we talked about. If you go up and you put uh, uh, north side only fifth level, that you can fit another uh, twenty eight spaces and and get up to two fifty nine. All of this inventory assumes two elevators, so if you did go down to one elevator, you're probably adding a space on every floor or something, but that's kinda minimal. Um, and just a call back to an earlier uh, note was um, was two hundred and five spaces, what we were talking in the original calculation. So just to give some context of what two thirty one is and what two fifty nine is. Um, so looking at that um, base garage, uh, I wanna point out that the four floors, two hundred thirty one spaces, not particularly attractive, uh, notably from the exterior, that that includes, uh, and I wanted to make sure it was made clear, three hundred thousand dollars of contingency. I made sure we had, uh, I forget the exact percentage, but a percentage of contingency and for the construction, just labor rates, things like that. Uh, and and maybe an unforeseen thing as we going going through the design, you wanna have some contingency in there. And a hundred sixty thousand dollars for escalation. There's talk of tariffs, there's inflation, things like that. Maybe there's some escalation. So of that uh, eight point one million, which is the hard cost for construction and the soft cost for design, there's four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of contingency. Uh, I don't wanna take that out, but I just wanna make you aware that I built it in because I I, you know, made sure the team has that contingency in there, because we don't wanna go over when the bids start coming in. But maybe the bid comes in a little lower and you've got something to play with.
And if we're not spending two million dollars on renovating and.
To be determined, yeah. Um, so so the way I wanted to present it um, and you know, kinda mix and match, but your eight point one million, if you added the fifth floor, comes up to uh, eight point nine, because it's about seven hundred thousand to do the fifth floor. If you said no, but we do want the exterior improvements like you see there with the paneling and the paint, then you're at eight point seven five. You say, no, we just want the second elevator, then you're at eight point three. If you wanna do all three, you're at nine point seven. Uh, off the board options like, hey, we wanna stay at four floors, um, a mural, but extend to First Avenue and have a second elevator, you know, maybe that's nine point three.
And greenspace on the roof.
I can't speak to how much that would cost, but um, I think it's really good that this is a presentation night and not a decision night and that our decision is August nineteenth. Um, uh, but I think these are, we're getting really good feedback on uh, what are priorities? And my intent is to have some more kinda numbers that we can bring uh, in these one on ones and you guys can continue to gather more information, but this is what the initial design team put together uh, based on what they found in the field and what they had with the the kinda design criteria we gave them inside the box that we asked.
Thank you very much.
Um. That's the timeline and that's the questions.
It's and it's not, there's not, um, it's nothing easy. It's very complicated, but it's a very, very important show. Um. Oh, um, Mr. Mr. McBoy, we have more things to do. No, I can't, I can't. We have other things we have to do.
What's that?
Well, I think we have other things that we need to do and it's ten to eleven. We have, um, yeah, so let's just keep going on the agenda. We've decided what we're gonna do. So.
You're on my calendar in late July and you can ask me lots of questions then.
There you go. Okay, so it's ten to eleven. And um, we have liaison reports and comments that we need to do.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I have a lot of public comment.
And I've got public comments.
But you're not voting. Do I have to read all this public comment that will probably take twenty minutes?
Right, no. Peggy Fisher's here in person. She's waving her hands as never mind. Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna, yeah, we have some more business to do, so. It'll, it's all online.
All that stuff that is online, it'll still be relevant for the next conversation.
Yep, yep. It's a present, yeah.
It already is.
It already is. Um, okay, so let's start with District One.
Um, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. We all received a letter from our city attorney, Glenn Torcivio um, yesterday in regards to some legislative updates. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look through them. Um, a couple of them that I I'm concerned about, uh, the first one is Senate Bill seven eighty four revises the process for plating, requires approval of plats and replats administratively rather than by governing bodies and that the local government designates responsibilities by ordinance or resolution. Christie said that um, she believes that Elizabeth is already working on bringing that forward. Senate Bill nine fifty four requires local governments to adopt an ordinance by January first of two thousand twenty six, establishing procedures for the review and approval of certified recovery residences, establishes requirements for what must be included in the ordinance. Um, so we have a couple of months to get on that one. And one of the things that Mr. Segred had talked about was coming up with some rules and ordinances for electric bikes. Well, now you have Senate Bill four sixty two, which addresses regulations and ordinances related to electric bicycles, micro mobility devices, which I guess is that one wheeled little thing, and motorized scooters, authorizes local governments to adopt an ordinance providing one or more minimum age requirements to operate an electric bicycle and requiring an operator to possess a government issued photographic ID while operating the bicycle. So these are some things that I'm, I just, I I don't know if you guys have had time to look at them. Um.
Do we get it from Glenn?
It came from Glenn, July fourteenth. And I know that that this is just gonna bog staff down again with ordinances and things that we have to get done in a timely fashion. Not that you guys have nothing to do, but a lot of these things that passed you guys are really taking more control and more home rule away. And it just, we have to pay attention to this stuff.
I didn't get it. I didn't get anything.
Here, forward to us, please. Uh, Mr. McBoy.
Okay, I had a lot, but I'll try to shorten it up as best I can. Um. Uh, we recently voted to no longer raise the Haitian flag. Uh, I would say shame on this commission commission particular for choosing this time in history to not stand behind all of our various communities. Um. We had a discussion at a pre-agenda meeting that we were going to change our rules to have commissioners only talk about business of the city. Um, we have in almost every resolution and ordinance that we pass, a whereas clause that says what we're doing is in the best interest of the public health, safety and general welfare of the city. The city, the business of the city is something that each of us as elected officials have a property right to speak on and to represent the community. W Moda, I'm hearing from a lot of people, not people that I've heard of before, who are very upset about this project, very upset about the public money giveaways, um, and uh, just relaying that. Um, it was mentioned that discussion of the mass detention camp at Dade Collier, it was implied that this was not city business. The father of an eleven year old who is in school here in our city is sitting in that hot, humid place that I will be going down to tomorrow. Uh, Archbishop Thomas Wensky, we all wanna make America great again, but you're not gonna make America great by making America mean. We, I have sworn to uphold our US Constitution. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty or property without due process of law. Attorneys are trying to contact the folks that are in that facility and they're not able to. There is no due process of law happening on that. That is residents of our city. Multiple residents of our city there. We do have a duty to speak out on it. There is a. There is a good governance aspect to this. I, as a scientist, have been monitoring that place through remote imagery and both recently connected and historic. And I've said, they are doing new paving. Multiple hundreds of dump trucks have gone into that asphalt trucks. And guess what? Florida Department of Emergency Management head has repeatedly said there's no new paving. And guess what is on public sites, uh, of state site? Eleven million dollar contract for paving and the contract is to FDM.
Okay, I'm gonna cut you off now. We have six minutes.
Dishonesty in government is something that I feel a need to speak out on.
Ms. May.
Um, I just wanted to thank the leisure services team uh for a great Fourth of July. Um, and I want to thank the NAPC for putting together um a really fun raft race this year. I think that we've gotten some really good feedback on the inflatable race, which is kind of funny. Um, and next year, we are even looking at um differentiating between a raft and a boat. So it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that. Um. And just FYI for anybody listening, those, the meetings and 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 any of the planning for any of the NAPC events are open to anybody in the city. So anybody that wants to participate can on any of the committees. And we have a lot of people that participate on the committees that aren't presidents. They're just citizens that want to have fun and participate and help the city. Um, I do want to reiterate Friday night, the tree giveaway slash evening on the app at the um cultural center and um I don't have a whole lot else because I was on vacation for a week. So I am back and that's it. Thanks.
Welcome back. Thank you very much, Mr. Segredge.
I just wanted to quickly remind uh people who are watching that if they're interested in participating on the boards, there are still other boards that we have to decide. Get your applications in early. Um, wanted to thank PDSO again for their continued efforts. Um, the residents are are noticing um changes and and a difference um with all the policy and procedure stuff that we've worked out with them. Um, and that's it for now.
Thank you very much. I've spoken with someone um at Third Avenue South and South Lakeside and he said that the park, you know, I said, are there a lot of PDS, maybe five or six people? I mean, it's really, they've made quite an impact. And I want to thank them for that. I was gonna also thank NAPC for the amazing job they did. Um, we, uh, there is a Palm Beach County Transportation Master Plan being worked on. And there is a kickoff, a public kickoff on Friday morning, the eighteenth from nine o'clock to ten thirty at the Vista Center. I can put this up on um Facebook too. Uh, it's, it's just, it's for open to the public. It's just this mobility plan, this transportation plan, this is, we have the meeting of the mayors and the managers meeting. We just had that and so that's going on there. Um, a sad note, Mr. Ron Exline, who was a two term mayor here, passed away recently and we just want to thank him for his service and um I knew Ron and uh as the time marches on, but my sympathies and my condolences go to his family and friends. So with I'm just, I'm not gonna say anymore because we have two more to do.
I'll be very quick. Uh, first and foremost, you're welcome for uh moving the budget workshop from tomorrow to next Monday. Because that
Thank you.
was scheduled from nine to five tomorrow, but given the agenda tonight, we assume that we would not be out here by seven thirty.
That was kind.
Um.
Yeah.
Uh, two, um, on uh July eleventh, um, we were in receipt of um our third request from uh the Florida Doge. Um, all the, all the municipalities received it. Um, we actually talked about it yesterday, Madam Mayor, our our management mayor's meeting. So um that was due on, it's due on July twenty first. Um, our finance director did reach out to them and they got back to us pretty quickly and they have extended our deadline for the city, like what reached to the thirty first. So it is a pretty massive um document as far as what is being requested. So um obviously, given the fact we have our first budget workshop on Monday and all the other stuff we have going on, luckily, they were allowing us to to postpone. So um I didn't mention that yesterday because I know some of the other cities had mentioned um the taxing amount that they they did not get the um the extension as we did. So I know I'll reach out, but I will end it with that.
Madam Attorney? No report. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I know we could still talk, but we're.
All in favor?